I'm gonna call this meeting to order at seven o'clock if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States, America, to the Republic, which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Invisible.
As well.
Liberty.
Liberty.
And justice.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, I'm gonna get to my agenda here. Hey, proclamations and presentations, we have none. Public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council, two-minute limit. If you're on a device, please go to the Participants tab and raise your hand, your little blue hand. If you are on a phone, it is star nine, and when I call on you, if you could list your name and address before speaking, I would appreciate it. Uh, Karen?
Yes, hi, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Wifi's been a little wonky tonight with the storm. Is it okay to ask a question or comment on the old business item nine point two at this time?
You can comment on that now, yes, because then we can consider that when we're talking before setting the the public Karen, yes.
And then we just need your address for the clerk's record.
Uh, Karen Maria on fifty, Merlot Way.
Okay.
Um, I didn't, I didn't check if Chief Lightell was on the call tonight, but um, my question was probably towards him, or maybe Mr. Rosen knows what is the expected life of this capital item? Because I would consider that a vehicle, a capital investment. And then um, my comment is at a time of so much uncertainty right now, and when it's highly likely that next year we will be in a worse situation as a community because we don't know what's happening. I asked this council why you would be suddenly changing your stance on using seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our fund balance for this item. A fund that is really meant for emergencies. And for me personally, if I needed a car during this public health emergency because mine has broken down and I need to get to work to help my family, I would not be depleting my savings account to buy one with cash. I would like my taxes that have been invested and sitting in a fund balance to go toward the families and small business owners in this community that may be hurting. Why are we not thinking outside the box? A term this council uses quite often. To help the people you say you're advocating for. I would like to see us using that fund balance. If you're gonna use any of it to help the community in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing anybody. We are gonna go on to, oop, nope, jumped and jumped, nope, nobody's got the hand raised, okay. Public hearing items, six point one, consideration of a resolution authorizing the issue of three million dollars bonds to refund certain prior bonds of the town and finance such additional amounts as are needed to pay all fees, costs, expenses, and premium in connection with the refunding of the prior bonds and appropriating the proceeds of such bonds for the foregoing purpose. We gotta find a way to simplify these things.
So, good evening, everybody, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. I will have the answer to Karen's question when we get to nine point two. I actually, both John and Lisa are here, so we can answer that when we get to that item. As for the public hearing, um, this is a continuation of the last meeting where we had set the public hearing for tonight to issue, uh, originally, we had issued up to three million dollars in general obligation bonds. This would be to refund future maturities of the prior bond issue. So what this ends up yielding is a savings of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand seventy-six dollars because of a refunding, uh, and maybe Lisa, if you can explain this a little bit better than I am, but the financial impact of this refunding is an anticipated net savings in debt service payments. Basically, it's a refinancing for a lower overall debt total, uh, and it's gonna save us almost two hundred thousand dollars to do so. Maybe Lisa, if you can piggyback off of that.
Hey, Mike, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt before Lisa, but I'm noticing I don't think we're recording the meeting yet. I wasn't sure if Lisa had hit the record button for the meeting yet or not. Or if we're not recording tonight, because I know there's only a recording button.
So, okay, so thank, thank you for pointing that out. I do believe that we are live through CVC, is that correct? I don't know if Mr. Levine's on, but uh, I'd see he's in the participants list, so generally, these things get recorded right to CVC.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I noticed I didn't see the red dot, so.
Yeah, but thank you for pointing it out, Lisa usually keeps a backup copy, thank you for pointing that out.
No problem.
Okay, so um, our financial advisor Barry is gonna be online, he he's trying to get online right now, I'm not sure if he's here.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, he's, he's here.
Yep.
Okay, so now, if you wouldn't mind, could you please re- rephrase what you were asking? Just for Barry's.
So, hi, hi, good evening, Barry, it's Mike Rosen, Town Manager. I went through the overview of the item that, for tonight, uh, to kind of boil it down to what we're doing. It's, we're going to be refinancing, uh, our, you know, our previous bond issue, and because of favorable rates, we're gonna be saving a hundred and ninety-four thousand seventy-six dollars. So I'm just wondering if maybe you can explain for those who may not have been here last week when we set the public hearing, what exactly, what are we doing tonight? What's this mechanism? How did we save this money?
Sure, sure, um, absolutely, yeah, the town is gonna be entering into the bond market to issue what we call new money bonds for various capital projects, and we're gonna piggyback this refinancing opportunity along with that, and we're gonna hopefully refinance the remaining portion of the two thousand ten and eleven bond issues for the town. And we're looking at over two hundred thousand dollars of savings. Interest rates are very favorable, uh, and uh, the town's bond rating is uh, currently rated triple A, and and I think it's gonna be affirmed at that triple A level, so the low interest rate environment combined with the town's triple A bond rating should ju- should generate over two hundred thousand dollars of savings to the town.
Thank you.
Um, okay, does anybody have anything else they want to discuss before we open the public hearing?
See Kurt, their hand up.
Uh, Kurt has your hand up?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just have a question for Lisa, how often do you do a review like this, you know, particularly in this climate of interest rates? I mean, is this a yearly thing you look for through old debt issuances to see if there's any saving, potential savings? I'm just curious, thank you.
Our financial advisor and I are always looking to see what we can do, and um it's been very limited because of the federal laws that changed our ability to um refinance bonds, they all have to be current refinancing, and we do have a call on these two bonds that allow us to do that. Otherwise, there, we're very limited as to the ones that we can actually do, so.
Lisa, can you just tell him what it means when you said you have a call on the bonds? I know what that means, but most people probably won't.
Sure, when, when you sell bonds, you build into the language of the bond sale a certain date as to when we could go back to the investors and, and request them to basically, we're buy, we can buy back the bonds at that date. Um, and there's usually a feature in there, either you call it at par, which means the original face value, or you know, there could be premiums, discounts, all that built into the call feature. So, the date has arrived for these particular bonds where we can call them, and the interest rate environment right now is um very good, where we could actually save money, and we did, we had another analysis performed today where Mike was talking about the one ninety-four number, and um the reanalysis done today showed even, even over two hundred thousand, so we're we won't know exactly till the day of the sale what that actual amount is, and if it's not worth it to go through, we can just say we're not gonna do it. But I don't see any reason why it's not gonna be worth it at this point. So, like I said, we're always looking at whatever we can, but we're very limited as to what we can refinance.
So, so what might be helpful there? I don't know, if you remember last meeting, or maybe it was before when we started talking about this, I asked if there were any other bond amounts that we could redo at this time because the late, the interest rates were so low compared to some of our older bonds, but they are not at their call date, so we can't refinance them. So everything that we can refinance right now is what Lisa and Barry have looked at refinancing to maximize the save for the town.
That's correct.
Um, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, uh, this is just a question for Barry, so um, well, for both Barry and Lisa, I guess. So, based upon what, uh, what Tammy was saying, that there's no guarantees that we would be able to refinance possible bonds or other things that we have in the future based upon federal restrictions because of how things have been changing, is that correct?
Yes and no, and I think I'll let Barry elaborate on that. You, you can do certain taxable issues, but sometimes it may or may not be worth it. And we also look at that opportunity as well. But Barry, do you wanna go ahead?
Right, so, so Lisa, you said it correctly, um, that uh you know, the, the new federal law means you cannot refinance bonds until you get to what's called that, that call date. And we are at that call date for, for the two thousand ten and eleven bond issues, but for other bond issues, we're not there yet, we have to wait till we get closer. So um we, once we do get there in a couple of years, you know, if rates are still low, the town will have another opportunity to refinance, if rates move higher, just because we get to the call date doesn't necessarily mean you can refinance them. It means you have the option to refinance them, but if rates are not favorable, you, I wouldn't recommend doing it because there'll be no savings. The other good thing about this opportunity is, um, when you do issue bonds, it is kind of expensive and time-consuming. Town manager and the finance director spend a lot of time putting the disclosure document together, there's rating agency cost, there's the disclosure document. The, the good thing here is we're combining these two issues together, what we call, again, the new money issue with the refinancing, so that's gonna generate a lot of synergies and savings from a cost of issuance standpoint, kind of like killing two birds with one stone.
Okay, um, and you said that we have, currently have a triple A bond rating?
Yeah, the town does, it's the highest bond rating possible, in fact, uh, we just had the bond uh, rating agency call today, and the town, uh, town manager and the finance director did a great job, I, it's, it's my expectation that the town's triple A bond rating will be affirmed uh, later this week.
Okay, and so, but something that could affect it will be taking out additional bonds, which could affect that triple A bond rating, is that, is that, is that about accurate?
Well, it, uh, the overall debt ratios are one factor that they look at in conjunction with your financial ratios, with your management team, uh, with your long-term liabilities. And I think when they look at the whole picture, Talon is very, very favorable. So, uh, I, I think Talon has one of the highest, what they call FMA, or Financial Management Assessment Scores, not only in the state of Connecticut, but throughout the country. And that was conveyed to us uh, in, in a past rating review, that they, they really impressed with the town's management practices, budgeting discipline, and adoption of formal policies and procedures.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Madam Chair, sure.
Okay, if no other councils have money, uh, have money, have, oh, well, there you go, that was a slip of the, that's a slip of the thing there, alright, so nobody had any more questions, we're gonna open up the public hearing, if the public has any questions or anything that they want us to consider, um, please, when we open the hearing, raise your hand, it's the same thing as public participation. So, Steve?
Sorry, I'm, I'm forgetting, we need to actually make the motion to open it, or?
Make the motion to open the public.
Alright, I think she had a motion to open the public hearing.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Uh, Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I. With that, the public hearing is open, if anybody on the phone would, I mean, on the line here would like to participate, please raise your blue hand, state your name and address when I call on you, and if you're on the phone, that is star nine. Okay, I am not seeing anybody raising their hand. So I guess we can close the public hearing.
Alright, Steve Jones, they've entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
Brenda Felucia, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra? Hi, sorry, that's okay, Steve?
Hi.
Um, John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so the public hearing is closed. Do we have anything else that we would like to discuss before we vote on this resolution?
This is Brenda Felucia, I'd just like to thank Lisa and Barry for their due diligence and all their work, and Mike Rosen for getting this squared away and ready for us. Your efforts are appreciated.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, with that.
Alright, if there is no one else, I would entertain a motion that be resolved by the Talon Town Council that hereby appropriates as follows. A resolution authorizing the issue of three million dollars in bonds to refund certain prior bonds of the town and to finance such additional amounts as are needed to pay all fees, costs, expenses, and premium in connection with refunding of prior bonds and appropriating the proceeds of such bonds for the foregoing purpose, and setting a public hearing for August twenty-fifth. Approved by the Town Council on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
This is Lou Luba, I'll second.
Any discussion? Um, the only thing I wanted to add in the discussion point is, I think we said it, but I wanna make perfectly clear to everybody too, that this is not gonna extend the life of the debt, just lower the amount of interest that we are paying. Okay, uh, nobody else has anything else? Um, all those in favor, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra? Hi, Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, that passes unanimously, thank you, guys. That then gets us to seven A, uh, reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Mike, I know Katie is not here, and I know Birch Grove has a meeting next week. Do you think at some point it is, we should get them on here to give us an update of how everything is going?
Well, if that's a formal request, I can certainly ask the Chair of the Birch Grove Building Committee to join us for our next meeting. I know it's been a little while since we, we had that at, at a formal meeting, but um, so, I, I can do that if, if council agrees.
I am good with that, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, same here, I see Lou's hand is up, um, I don't know if he wants to give an update from the last meeting or not.
Mr. Luba?
I don't know if you want me to wait until, uh, at the reports of the Town Councilers, or I could give one now because I was in on the last meeting.
You can give one now because it is a, it's a, it's a committee responsible to the council, so you can do it now or in the next part, whichever you're more comfortable with.
Yeah, I can do it now, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, that the Birch Grove Building Committee did meet, uh, last week, and we did discuss the, what was going on, uh, that there was an issue regarding bringing forward a modification proposal for, uh, for additional funding on a, on a certain issue that the, uh, that the Building Committee did not approve, that the, uh, that the construction on the building is on track, and we did get to see additional pictures. I know that some of the Town Council members, as well as other members of the, uh, of various committees, did attend the topping off ceremony, that, um, everything is going at this point very, very swimmingly, very smoothly, and, uh, that, um, that that we are getting updates on a regular basis as far as any, any additional issues that may come up, that they know that, uh, that the Building Committee is very concerned about any additional cost overruns, which of which there have not been any at this point, but as I said, the biggest issue was the discussion of approving a, um, a, a fund proposal and, uh, some other changes, some additions for, uh, FASIA on some, uh, some, uh, block work that was, uh, on a retaining wall that was, uh, that was loaded down, and I believe that, uh, Mike was, uh, I believe Mike was there, uh, Mr. Rosen was there as well, and he could sort of fill in the blanks that I may have missed.
Yeah, you, you covered Lou, thank you, um, most of what I had heard as well. I, I remember that the, the one change order was tabled to the next meeting to, to see if there was more information that could be, um, brought out about it, so, um, I believe that's gonna be on the next agenda as well.
Yes, that's accurate, thank you.
Thank you, Lou, um, Brenda?
Brenda Felucia, I just wanna say, um, a quick thank you to all of our construction and team with that wild weather we had, and to hear that we're still on schedule. That's good news, I was a little worried there that without power, um, and with the storm we had that day, that there might have been an impact, and I'm glad to hear there wasn't, so thank you for, um, the construction for keeping everything on track.
Um, Brenda, do you have anything from, uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, Sustainable CT has not had a meeting since last time. Tourism, I am in charge of creating a cultural tourism brochure for central region of Connecticut. I'll be reaching out to the Talon, um, tourism, cultural tourism, um, groups to see if they fit the criteria for the brochure. Census has not met, but I do wanna make people aware that there are census workers in town. They're going around and knocking on doors if you have not responded to the census, and you can do that at twentytwentycensus.gov. They are also trying to do proxy, and what proxy is, is if someone hasn't responded, they look for someone who can be a proxy for how many people live in that household. You don't necessarily have to give names, in fact, you're not required to give names. You can just say there's two adults and three children living there. The reason why they allow the proxy is to try to get an accurate count within the town of Talon so that, um, we get the proper funding, um, for things like the schools and for human services, for roads, different in, other things like that. So you may get a knock on your door, um, asking about, you know, your next door neighbor, someone who lives across the street. Again, it's something that we're trying as a community to help ensure we're getting an accurate count. Talon is still one of the highest, if not still the highest, it's getting hard to track all hundred sixty-nine towns if we have the highest percentage or not, but we've done an excellent job. So kudos to, to everybody in the town and the entire committee for ensuring we get that done. Um, and that is it for those kinds of reports.
Perfect. Um, Steve, you had your hand up, but is it for regular reports to Town Council, or, um, do you have something for this one?
No, I actually had a question for Lou, but if, but if you wanna keep going through the list of people.
Oh, go ahead, you have a question, go ahead.
I was just curious, I heard something through the grapevine about, for Birch Grove, for the Building Committee, about the playgrounds are actually gonna be open and accessible, that are being built for the new school, are gonna be accessible to the kids for the current portables this year, I was curious if that's, that's accurate or not.
Um, thank you, Steve, that, if, they are working on them right now, as far as being accessible, I don't think that's exactly accurate, I know that they're working on them, um, but that it's something that that's still in a work in progress, there's still a lot of things that need to be decided on it. One of the issues was the, uh, was for, what were you gonna use as a base, if it was gonna be just simply mulch, or a, or rubberized, or a combination of the two? And that was, that was something that was put, put off, so, um, that, I, I don't think that's quite accurate, but I know that they are moving on track.
Okay, yeah, no worries, I just heard, you know, I think we had prior emails earlier on in dealing with COVID about accessibility to the playgrounds at parks, so I was just curious if, uh, those were, if there are any accessible parks and playgrounds for students that'll be going in person through the hybrid model at the the more, the modular buildings, so, but no, that's good, I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
You say that, and I think of Tony and all of his emails, like, Tony was the number one advocate for playgrounds. Okay, that gets us to seven B, reports of Town Council liaisons, Brenda?
Hello, thank you, this is Brenda Felucia, Light Committee, um, their last meeting was canceled and their next meeting is canceled, so there's no business. Land Acquisition has not had a meeting, Planning and Zoning had a very busy meeting last night. Some of the things, we had a public hearing on solar panels for, um, the area of town that has the historic district in it, they were looking about removing, um, some setbacks. We also took a look at a special permit for a dog kennel. We started talking about, um, drive-throughs, that public hearing is continuing, so people can still give input about the drive-throughs. We helped a resident with an accessory building, get it, um, that's actually been continued with, the resident wasn't able to get on last night, so actually, I'm sorry, it wasn't continued, it, it was approved. Again, it was going to eleven thirty last night. Chickens, we're going to be discussing chickens and some, um, excellent changes that the Ag Commission has proposed, that's gonna be on September twenty-eighth. It's great to see the boards and commissions work together, um, and I think that this is a positive step forward for our community to be able to have this kind of discussion. Um, and they also took a look at some, um, home occupation edits that, um, had some very favorable recommendations going forward. So, um, it was a very busy meeting, um, the, the minutes are not out yet, but they should be out within the next couple of days. We had some robust discussions, and again, it was, it was great, um, seeing the different commissions work together on a variety of different issues. And that was it.
Thank you, uh, Cassandra? Nothing for me. Steve?
Alright, Steve Jones, so I'm gonna try and go in at least chronological order, the Board of Ed had a meeting on August twelfth. This high-level summary, they provide, they did approve, uh, Dr. Willett's contract through twenty twenty-three. They had a lot of discussion around, um, their straw poll, as well as general discussion of the scheduling and format, and they approved the scheduling for September eighth, I believe, being the first day of school. They're currently discussing a civility policy, a few other discussions, um, surrounding the opening, as well as, um trying to think, there's one other item that was in their agenda. Nope, it was just the school calendar and the contract were the two highlights of that. The Water Commission met on the seventeenth, they discussed the response to Hurricane Storm Isaiah's, which they gave really resounding reviews of Connecticut water's assistance in some of the damage and impacts they had to, uh, their support, their system and their infrastructure. Otherwise, um, meters won't be considered for a while due to the pandemic. There's still some DPH and, uh, other regulations regarding the, the payments and, um, other processes for, for the Connecticut water system due to COVID. They're currently in the process of a leak detection survey due to some excessive water usage that is indicating a leak in one portion of the system. Otherwise, no updates to College View and the Car Wash for the two primary new hookups in process. The financials weren't yet available, but it seems like a good financial year for them, and that pretty much sums it up. There's no liaison yet, but myself and Chair Menuccio both attended the inaugural Commission on People's Civilities Meeting, which was fantastic, Mike took excellent notes, and they selected their Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, and I believe it's the third Thursday of the month, they will be meeting month, once a month, um, for the foreseeable future unless they decide to change that schedule to be meeting more frequently.
Seven PM, correct?
At seven PM, thank you, Mike. And I think that does it for me, except for, I think, Thursday, there's a conservation meeting, and the only update to them was that, um, they did add a new link to their Talon, the town website that allows you to report specific problems with trails and attach files and provide descriptions of issues due to the, the tropical storm, as well as, um just any general damage or issues with accessibility on the trails. just any general damage or issues with accessibility on the trails. I think that that wraps it up.
Steve, can you maybe um give a little more color around we um the you mentioned the the storm impact for the?
Yeah, I'll have to pull up the the minutes to to look at that, but I believe there was a piece of the infrastructure near the water tank that was either damaged or blocked by um by storm damage. And just looking at the the minutes, um Donald and Mike from Connecticut Water did a phenomenal job at making sure that was accessible. Um they highlighted Paul Russell as well from Connecticut Water and um Mr. Lowry, who is the representative uh to the Commission for Connecticut Water as well for just the communication and the efforts they did to um yeah, the interconnection was connected to the tank, and they got the tank back up and running. So the interconnection was the issue. A tree with wires went down near the well. In turn, the well lost electricity, and thus the tank could not be pumped. When it was noticed, the Tallentum DPW contacted Connecticut Water, and the state needed to approve a temporary interconnects. The interconnection was connected. And um and then they got the tank up and running. So that was that was the specific incident in that area.
Okay, thank you. And then um I had one other question about the car wash, but uh I see Mr. Crickmore is on from Planning and Zoning. Um I was wondering, I didn't, I don't remember if that ever went through. Has that been approved through Planning and Zoning?
I don't know if it was approved. Yeah, John could definitely clarify. Um their their report from the minutes was that just there was no clear update. I think the economic impacts of COVID have put that in a standstill, um whereas the College View Apartments, I think there's an issue or a conflict with the water main, but I think the Fire Marshal has clarified that. So I'll mute myself, so John can clarify on the the car wash.
Mr. Crickmore, if you are uh.
Hello, man. There um there's nothing new on the car wash. It's pretty much in the same spot that it's been. I I believe that they got all the approvals that they needed to get to the point that they are, and they just haven't moved forward with with anything else. Last I knew, Heidi said it was very quiet. She hadn't had any contacts on them, so.
Does that have to come before you guys, or is that just fine with the zoning? Like, you said that they've gotten all the approvals that they need, so are they?
I believe the approvals they got were be from the last commission.
Okay.
So I don't know where they stand now. I know what they wanted to do was, you know, an approved use in that area.
Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly where it stands. That was, it really hasn't moved since the last commission.
Okay.
Yeah, and I remember it being highlighted as um like their 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 draw for probably um advertising was that they were going to be kind of an environmentally friendly car wash, and they're going to be using a lot of recycled water, and that was a a real sign of a plus, I think, for a lot of the the boards and commissions, because it meant that they were utilizing less water from the area. Um one other, I think, update, I don't know if I mentioned it last meeting, but I believe the Tallentum Sitgo, which is not currently hooked up to the water, is considering hookup and and, you know, it's kind of a you know, when pigs fly, I think for the longest time they said, no, we're just going to stay on our own system, and now they're they're interested in hooking up. So that might be one of the last few notable buildings that could hook up to the water along that route that isn't new, that is looking to hook up.
That'd be good.
But yeah, otherwise, I think that covers it. The Conservation Mission meets this week, applied to a big storm update. I mentioned the website. Um where where the core itself is doing a great job clearing out trees and in some cases rerouting trails. Uh some trees are just too massive to cut down by a few volunteers. They're just opting to reroute the trail and re blaze it so that it's uh accessible.
Okay. I've been watching. I've been seeing a lot of the the stuff on on that you've been posting online with the trails and that, so um that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Uh that gets me to John.
Yes, uh thank uh WPCA did meet on the eighteenth, and uh DPW Director Scott Lappin, I was there. He said that everything's running smoothly. The generators came on during storm. Uh there are two new hookups off of Old Pulse Road to Sore. And and speaking about the College View project again by headliners, there were some meetings with the hookups that the WPCA did talk about. They had to dig up and reset pipes, but it was caught early and it was fixed. Uh they have not tapped into the main line on one ninety-five yet. And uh Director Lappin does go there a couple of times a week to check it out. He says it's slow going, but it is moving along. Uh there was an update from Rob Grasses, who is the Chair of the Vernon WPCA. Uh they're talking about uh uh they're doing a project at Exit sixty-six and sixty-seven, and they're in communications with uh Scott Lappin about uh a pump station there and how Tallentum uh they just want to make sure that Tallentum is ready to hook in. Uh there was a rate meeting in Vernon, and there's going to be no change in the sewer rates this year. And then he also did give an update on the sewer plant um that's being updated in Vernon. It's it's moving along. There are no major issues. And the Chair of the WB uh WPCA, John Zaveshkin, uh he requested to talk through, and Rob said, no problem, whenever he that he can do that. And then um on Route thirty, uh there's a the project that's going on there. Um Steve Williams paid permit fees, but he has not paid the connection fees yet, so there are going to be um some some units going in there forty to forty, between forty and forty-four units i- in that project there. They haven't figured out exactly what it's going to be yet, though, uh and and that does it for WPCA. That's all I have for you.
So, okay, thank you. Um Lou?
Give him my update uh regarding Birch Grove. That's all I have.
Stole your thunder already.
Yep, exactly. Thank you.
You're welcome. You got to go early, you know. Um Kurt?
Uh I none of my uh commissions met, so I have no update for you.
Perfect. Well, not really, but that's okay. I get it. Um so I had Board of Ed, as Steve pretty much mentioned, um most of it. The reopening, first day of school is September eighth. Um just today, though, or just I think it was today or yesterday, I um saw that the school is going to be awarded another hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state for COVID expenses. So with the original forty-five thousand that they were planning to use for um Chromebooks, that means they're going to be getting almost two hundred thousand dollars uh this year for reopening expenses in relation to uh COVID. Um cohorts were assigned, and um the start of schools, uh the first week of school is going to be the week of September eighth. Um the way that it's going to, the hybrid model is going to work is a cohort A on Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday will be a hundred percent remote, and the school will be cleaned, and then Thursday, Friday will be cohort B. Um the FRC will be offering hybrid um slash daycare and kindergarten daycare options also. Um and just as a side note, Star Hill is also offering um what they're calling their CARES daycare session um to work along with the school plan. And several local day daycare providers have also um opened up seats and spots. Uh the Commission on People with Disabilities met. Um they have elected Walter Glum as their Chair. Uh Vice Chair is John Malenti, and Secretary is Susan Hughes. Um they set their meetings for the third Thursday of every month at seven P M, starting in September. Uh and tonight, I sent you guys all an email earlier today asking if anybody is interested in being liaison for that commission. If you could please send me an email, I'd like to figure out where it stands with everybody, so we can have a liaison before their first meeting in September. Um I also had an Eastern Highland Health District meeting, and there was actually a lot that went on there. Um the state reduced the funding for health districts by eight point five percent. Um they get a per person amount. So it went from a dollar eighty-five per person to a dollar sixty-nine. The rest is funded by the towns and permitting and license revenues. Um it's eight point five percent below the statutory level. Um they anticipated this, which is why our town portion funding went up. Um all the local cases currently in our health district are from Yukon. Um right now, our lumber, our numbers are low. So they have uh one person doing contact tracing, and they are keeping up with everything, exceeding the expectations on that. There was a lot of talk around the effect that um Yukon's cases are going to make us look worse. Um so from review of other states, looking at counties within Connecticut, and that Tallentum County is going to spike. Um but we have ha increase in Yukon cases. That's right next door to us, so Tallentum County looks higher. Um so there was some discussion on trying to see if there's a way to break out Yukon, so it doesn't show that our local towns have that um spike. Um they tested over five thousand ki- kids on campus and on and off campus. They deployed twenty um MRC members to test and support. They're also planning on using those volunteers uh when they do vaccinations in the community. Um they talked about the school opening and any concerns that were being raised by the local school district about not having enough contact tracers. They reassured us that that's not the case, that they have enough people to do the contact tracing. Um of course, if if we have this huge explosion, they um have a backup plan. The state has two to three hundred contact tracers that are available as resources. So if the response time for contact tracing for any positives are not what the state would like to be, they will automatically get support from the state, so there is absolutely no concern about not having enough contact tracers um from their perspective when school opens up. Um let's see, they talked about the flu vaccine and mass vaccination. So when a vaccine is available, they're expecting to vaccinate anywhere between ten to thirty percent of our population, so anywhere between eight to twenty-four thousand people, eight thousand to twenty-four thousand people. Um right now, they have one nurse, so they won't be able to uh vaccinate everybody with the staffing that they have, but they're going to be relying on the MRC Corps, the Corps there, the Medical Reserve Corps, to assist with vaccination administration. Um and the Health District is looking at doing two small by appointment flu clinics in October. Um and then they're looking at doing a larger drive-through clinic for the flu in November. Um October and November, they're saying is the best time to get the flu shot this year, uh and the rationale with that is if there's less influenza, if people start to develop respiratory symptoms, it increases the odd that it could be COVID and not the flu. But that is also an assumption based on the idea, uh we don't know how effective the flu shot will be this year. In the past, it's goes anywhere between thirty to eighty percent effective, depending on which strain it is. Um the the worry is if people aren't protected from the flu, there could be some interaction between the flu and COVID that could worsen the infection as a whole. So they're encouraging us and everybody to tell everyone um to get their flu shot. And then the the Health District um will be receiving a grant of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the period of five nineteen twenty twenty through eleven seventeen twenty twenty-two to be used in the COVID pandemic response activities. Um and it is a spend it or lose it grant, so they are going to be hiring more resources. Um they talked about test results coming back slow. They said this is a nationwide problem. It is not isolated to Connecticut. Um and they're seeing more than likely between four to six day turnaround time. And then the last thing that they discussed is another thing we're going to have to keep our eye on, and that is the triple E mosquitoes. Um if we see a large uptick, they may have to go back to last year's plan to curb outside activities around dusk like they did last year. But we did have our first positive case last week in Stonington and one human case in Massachusetts also um last week. So a lot from Eastern Highland, uh the Health District meeting there. And that's all that I have. Um Steve, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I had um one question for Kurt, if he's able to answer it. Otherwise, I'll wait for the next meeting, but I was curious if they set a date for the um the Farm to Take Out event with possibly Becker's being the host. I was curious if that's happening. I saw the mi- the the minutes indicated that they're looking to advertise it and but I didn't see if there was a date set yet, or if they're waiting to do that in September.
Uh I I don't know. I can't remember off the top of my head. I'll get back to you on that one, though.
No worries. I I can always touch base with them as well. And then one other comment I just wanted to make. I did receive an email. I don't know if it went to the Town Council or not, but the Chief Laitel, our Chief Laitel, sent out an email from Eastern Highlands Health District with an update just from a data standpoint of COVID cases as of today at four thirty. Tallentum has an accumulative total of fifty-seven cases, fourteen hospitalizations, and um four deaths in terms of just the data that was provided by Rob Miller. So I just, I received that recently through the the Chief. I don't know if that's being sent to the Council or if it had been sent to the Town Manager's office yet, but that was just a little statistic update.
We can see if if the Council wants to get that, then, Mike, we can have that forwarded onto the Council.
Yeah, they've um, this is Mike, the Town Manager. Uh they they've reduced the frequency of how often Rob sends these reports. Um if you would like, I'm not sure if you're all on Chief Laitel's distribution list. Um we can make sure you're all on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that gets us to eight dash one. Consideration of a resolution approving the revised Building Official and Director of Planning Development job description.
Um so good evening, uh Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Uh I, this is a bit of a housekeeping item. Um so as you all know, at the last meeting, we announced that um Heidi Smoker, our Planning Director, is unfortunately um going to be leaving the town of Tallentum effective September third, um so just a few weeks from now, or a little bit more than a week. Um i- in doing so, we wanted to take the opportunity to revise the job description for the Planning Director role as well as the Building Official role. So the Building Official currently reports to the Director of Planning. Uh we would like to change that so that the Building Official reports directly to the Town Manager, uh or designee, but for the Town Manager. And then um simultaneously, since that's that change is going to happen, we need to change the Planning Director's position to reflect that the Planning Director will no longer supervise the um Building Official. Uh but we did also, I think we built in here on page uh sixteen of fifty-eight in your packet, number eight serves as supervisor to Assistant Town Planner. That wasn't spelled out. It said Building Official before. We'd like you to say Assistant Town Planner instead of Building Official, and that's the only change. Um so again, very much a housekeeping item. Thank you.
Um do you guys want me to put the description up on the screen, or does everybody have it to look at? Kind of your hand is up. I'm sorry, Steve, what was that?
Sorry, I was just saying, I'm I'm good. Steve Jones, I'm good with uh just reading it from one of my other screens, but if you want to put it up, I'm okay with that as well.
Um I think I'll put it up just so everybody can see it, just in case. Uh hold on one second.
And and while you're putting that up, this is Brenda Felus. So, Mike, I believe that this reporting was what it was. We've had this um reporting uh previously. It had been previously the um Building Official used to report to the Town Manager, and then it used to um the Town Planner. Like, we're just going back to the way it used to be a few years ago, if I remember correctly.
Uh thank you, Brenda. I think that was actually relayed to me by Mike Wilkinson, our Director of Administrative Services. I I believe you're correct about that. Um I'm not sure the reasoning at the time when um the official, Building Official role was transitioned under the Planning Director. But since we will not have a full-time Director of Planning until we can hire one, I wanted to make sure that the, you know, Jim, our Building Official, would report to me directly. And going forward in on a permanent basis as well. I mean, the as as many of you may know, Jim was a vital part of my E O C team over the COVID crisis. We interacted as if he was a department head as, you know, he was a division head, but uh it makes sense to me that the Building Official report directly to me.
And also as a side note, thank you to him for all the work he did during our last storm. Um I know he was going out in the middle of the night to look at homes and um structures and et cetera. Um I think it makes sense to me. Um so thanks.
Okay, so I have um the job description up. This first one here is for uh the Building Official. Uh and it's just saying that it's going to report to the Town Manager. It just takes out the Director of Planning and community, puts in Town Manager. Um and there are no other changes.
That's right.
Description. And then the second one here.
Yep.
Is the planning, is the actual planning and community development. This is Heidi's role.
Correct.
Reports to the Town Manager or designee. Mike, does the top one say or designee?
Uh yes, it does. We 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 always build that language in, um but I'm not going anywhere, so it's going to be me.
I'm gonna hold you to that. Um okay, so we added it in. Okay, so we added an designee in there. And then down here, serves as supervisor to the assistant town planner and executive secretary.
Yep.
So those are the only changes that are on there. Okay, Steve, your hand is up?
Yeah, no, it it's just a very softball question. I assume in terms of using the term designee, would that go to like second-in-command Mike Wilkinson? Or would that just bounce back to the new uh planning and development director as a as a person that you designate as second? I'm sure it's probably more loosely interpreted, but I was curious what that process would normally be.
I I think it's flexible. Uh, it gives it gives the flexibility that if I, for whatever reason, and I believe this language exists in other job descriptions throughout the organization, but if for some reason I wanted to restructure, similar to probably what happened when they moved the building official under the planning director previously, they they may have been able to do so due to that language. I mean, I I I happen to think it's a good idea for the building official to report directly to me. Um, perhaps in my absence, if I'm on vacation, my designee would be the acting town manager. In some cases, it could be the Mike Wilkinson, or it could be, you know, in other cases, if Mike's not available, the fire chief or the TPW director. So that would be the instance where it would be the designee that the building official would report to.
Okay.
It's gonna be Lisa. It's gonna be Lisa, right, Lisa? Look at her, no. Okay, if uh if nobody else has anything else. Not seeing anything.
All right, uh, Steve Jones, I didn't train a motion that be resolved by the Talon Town Council that hereby approves the attached revised non-union group building official and director of planning and community development job descriptions approved by the Talon Town Council on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty.
This is Brenda Felussy.
Okay, um, any discussion? Um, all those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Um, sorry, Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Hey, uh, motion, oh, me, aye, yes, motion passes unanimously, sorry. Brain's not working well today. All right, gets me back up to eight-two. Consideration of a resolution approve uh authorizing the appropriation from the ambulance reserve fund to capital improvements account to purchase two twenty-four by twenty-four craftsmen's garages for thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for storage purposes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mike Rosen, town manager. I'm also gonna ask if uh John Laitel can um help me out with this item since this is really something that John is spearheading and I he's made a good case for why this is a uh necessity at this time. So the the request tonight is to consider um using ambulance reserve fund money to purchase two craftsman garages in the in the ballpark of about forty thousand dollars total, nineteen thousand seven fifty each for storage purposes. Um, the the description in tonight's packet, which actually, uh, if you wanna scroll down to page nineteen of the packet, has a good little summary of of what the request is. But uh, you know, Talon Emergency Management has identified um that permanent storage i- i- is a need of of the department and and for the town. And that includes for shelter supplies, equipment, uh, emergency response team gear. And these days, a a lot of the supplies have to do with COVID nineteen, whether they're masks or cots or um other PPE type of uh uh equipment. Um, and these things need to be stored in um temperature-controlled environments, protected from the weather and uh, you know, hopefully in an area that's not moist or damp so that they don't rot or start to become warped. So um, and this is maybe where John can help me out a little bit, but currently what we use for storage needs are two steel crates that are behind the fire training center. And um from what I've I've seen with my own eyes and also spoken with the fire chief about it, um, whatever goes into those shipping containers tends to get eh damaged or in bad shape because of mold and dampness within the containers. And I think we've had to throw out a good amount of equipment that's gone in there in the past. So what the request really is for tonight, even understanding that there's a space needs study going on in the fire department, which we can talk about how those these this interacts with that. But um we need someplace that's um safe and protected to put our our PPE and storage they uh equipment currently. And that, John, please jump in if you if you wanna explain a little bit more, but we need to do that sooner rather than later. And the good thing about these craftsman-style garages is that they're portable, that uh if we 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 probably would put one behind the fire training center in the same footprint where those two steel containers are currently, we'd get those containers out, prop either repurpose them or or junk them, depending on how what bad shape they're in. Put one of the garages there and then put one of them at Station one forty on Crystal uh Crystal Lake area there that um that's that would solve some of the space needs that John has in that um that firehouse as well. Um, John, I gave an overview. Do you wanna maybe jump into some of the details?
Yeah, so uh, thank you, Mr. Rosen. So obviously, before your uh time uh coming into Talon, the fire department has always had the uh study plan dating back to two thousand and six for expansion of the firehouses and uh space needs study reports. So obviously, I think we're one of the last municipal buildings in town to finally uh get on the agendas for capital improvements and everything else. But uh the COVID epidemic has really placed a huge burden. And I'm very fortunate to uh obviously hold the fire chief title, the director of public safety, and is also the emergency management director. But with the COVID, uh, it has really put a huge burden on me. And um, you know, unfortunately, I I feel bad for the school system with the crumbling foundations and the um cots that we had stored at the uh past Burt's Grove because we also like to uh place our cots in our portable units at the schools. So we have a lot of spare units at the high school, but with the closing of Burt's Grove, I've had to remove four to five uh large cot rolling containers that each housed twenty-five cots, and I had to bring them down a firehouse. So I'm very fortunate to have the uh fire department uh support behind me um to pretty much bring those into the firehouses. And we've lost so much space in between all the firehouses. And, you know, keep in mind that when we have these storm activations, um, you know, it's not, it's not pleasant to have the guys having not enough space in the firehouses to sleep in the bays or uh to be in the bays uh during these storms uh that we've had over the past uh few months or whatever. But um what we did was a few years ago, um, God bless Mr. Warbner, that he actually uh finally went to bat and picked us up a a couple of steel containers, and we placed them behind the training center. We tried to hide them behind there. Uh, we poured a pad, and those units were about four thousand dollars. They were used to uh steel shipping containers. And um with that being said, everyone in the community sees my donations, that we try to keep our budgets and our donations uh at the max. But uh all the donations that have come in with uh wheelchairs and other portable items that we have uh received from donations. Over the last four to five years, I've probably thrown away probably about five to eight thousand dollars worth of wheelchairs, uh walkers and other special needs stuff that if I opened up a shelter, uh, I wouldn't be able to even uh supply some of the things. We even have games in there that, you know, Bruce Watt is a awesome rec director in town, and he would actually assist us and uh being able to at least house uh some activities if we had to open up the schools for shelters. But over the last couple of years, I've thrown a lot of stuff away. And, you know, we even spent some money to try to put the uh air ventilation systems in it. But um the other side note is, obviously, I'm I'm receiving some complaints from the Stone Pond Association that a- and I feel bad that uh when the fall comes, they're looking at two steel containers behind the training center. So, you know, we've been uh very fortunate with the space and the community support behind us. Um, and unfortunately, right now, we're at a deficit that the training center is pretty much a storage place right now, the back room. I've had to move stuff. Um, and as a matter of fact, I'm trying to find a pickup truck tomorrow to send to West Hartford that they have to load a pallet of PPE. I've been doing everything in my power to try to grab as much PPE and other necessities to, hopefully, we don't have to use it, but if the uh pandemic pops back up in the fall, I wanna make sure that we have enough supplies and adequate stuff to uh protect our emergency responders. Um, and as well as I also received a lot of donations that I put in through Web EOC as Emergency Manager Director that has taken care of the uh other town employees. Um, and even the library I got stuff for and the uh town hall employees with masks and everything else. So right now, we're gridlocked. We are, we are in bad shape. Um, you know, and obviously, we're still in a virtual reality, so the EOC's not fully populated, but you can't even walk into EOC to even have a meeting or you can't even go out in the training center now. So with that being said, I think that um right now is the time to end up trying to pull the plug that we had a cost savings over the last SCBA project that we did. And we're saving almost, I think, and and Lisa is the best finance manager. She can probably put me right to the penny, but I think it was around forty-three or forty-four thousand that we were saving roughly on the SCBA pro- uh project that we took the money out of the ambulance funds. So instead of taking that forty-three thousand and turning it back into the ambulance funds and um items, I'd like to try to go after that and then um try to grab that money now. And while the space needs study continues and and moves on, and who knows what's gonna happen with the village plan and one ninety-five and the in Station two forty and Training Center, I'd like to clean up the property, get rid of those two steel containers. We could probably use them at the highway center or one of the other um fields or other places in town to store sports equipment or something else and relocate those. Um, there's not much value left of those, but at least we would have a professional um storage type of buildings that we could place behind the training center and as well as Station one forty. So there's so much items that we've gotten from grants and other items that they're taking up base space and wall space in the firehouses right now. And a lot of the meetings that we're doing right now in the training, we're using a firehouse base to try to take place to keep our mandatory training going on. So, you know, at the end of the day, once a space study gets done, I mean, obviously, we're gonna go after Station one forty to uh put that as a priority. And I think that it makes sense that, you know, if we get Station one forty's done through the capital project, then we split that uh garage up, and then we can easily take one and one um because we can add a wall to it and put the other garage over at Station three and Station four on Plains Road or Garing Road and then buy a couple of years. But we've been after these space needs studies since about two thousand and four, I can tell you that. So in two thousand and eleven, I tried to go back after the community to put a uh large Morton type of building up at Station one forty uh that would have housed a lot of stuff. But um this last storm that came through, I was unprepared. I wasn't usually myself. I usually have water, MREs, tarps and everything else to hand out to residents. Um, I was fortunate enough to get some volunteers to come down and to help us out and hand out some stuff. But I also received a tractor trailer load of eighteen uh pallets of water, which I have six of them stored inside uh Station two forty right now. That's in the middle of the floor right now. So if we get um any other storms, um, I'm prepared. So a lot of those steel containers host uh a lot of the tarps and other uh emergency management and as well as some fire department stuff that's in there. We host a lot of our spare tires and other equipment. But I think this is a win-win, and it's nothing that uh money's being thrown away, and it's uh generated by ambulance fees, not uh taxpayer dollars. So I think it would be a proficient move to move forth because what, who knows what's gonna happen? And um at least the PPE can stay in a dry environment. And then it gives me the space and the adequate um room to prepare the community uh for the next few years to properly, frondly be able to provide enough emergency management and sheltering supplies for uh the community if we have to uh end up needing to shelter the community or anything else. And we're in a hurricane season, so we have a next uh, you know, couple of weeks or so. So that's the uh overall. I I hope that answers most of it, Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ch- thank you, chief. You did a really great summary, and you had touched on one or two points that I wanted to kind of close on too. So one, I just wanted to point out to the council and to everyone listening is that, you know, we did go out and get three quotes for for the same um for the for the sheds. And the lowest quote was significantly lower than the other two bidders. Um, so we're actually going to be able to get two, two sheds for the price of one of the quotes for one shed. So I think that's a, shows you it's gonna be, it's a good deal that we're getting from the barnyard if we do go ahead and um authorize purchase of this. Uh, John touched on about where the funds are coming from for this. So uh as he as noted, uh, this this SCBA, the self-contained breathing apparatus project came in um significantly under budget, almost, almost to the extent that it offsets this request. So um while the transaction will happen through the ambulance reserve fund, John just wants to enumerate for you how uh how uh, you know, diligent and um disciplined he is with quotes and budget and things like that so that we are fortunate that we may be able to pay for this without really feeling the impact uh on the ambulance reserve fund because it's basically a wash. And then just the third thing I want, I I mentioned in my preamble is the idea of um the space needs study that we're currently uh engaged with the consultant who's doing the study on the on the three fire department or fire stations. And what happens if they recommend some sort of a permanent uh addition that we can then put this, put these PPE into those, to the uh to the addition? Uh, and John and I have talked about this, and the good thing about these garages is that they're portable. So if for whatever reason, if the fire department no longer needed these garages, they could be repurposed to other departments, whether it's parks or public works or possibly even the schools. They could stay within the town system. They would not go to waste. So, and John, that's accurate, right? I mean, we we would be able to move these around.
It is, and I don't know if uh you wanna entertain the motion that the, you know, Chairman Roost from the Talon Fire Department Board of Directors is online tonight as well under the Talon Fire Department. So it's very fortunate that we have a close working relationship, and obviously, I hold the one of three titles in town that, you know, the fire department's allowing me to to really stockpile most of the stuff into the fire departments. If you had three separate divisions in town, you'd have a emergency management department that's looking for storage space or rental space. So, you know, we've been even vigilant, love, that I've worked with Heidi and the town to try to even look at some of the uh foreclosures in town. If we've been looking at a garage or a house that would be foreclosed or crumbling foundation that we could use for four or five years. So a lot of these supplies over the past few years have been um, it it's sad to say, deteriorated. Um, most of these cots were stored at the old Parker School. And then when they had the mold issues and the water issues, we threw about thirty cots away. Um, so, you know, every single year, I try to buy as many cots and supplies as I can because I'm supposed to shelter, you know, approximately seven percent of the population. But we've been very fortunate that we haven't had a huge event that we had to shelter everybody. But I can tell you that uh with the proficient workings of the last storm, we're very lucky as a community to get the power back on to ninety percent of the people within one week's time, where um still the other side of state still have some roads blocked and still some uh wires and other issues. So we are fortunate. Um, thank God that this wasn't another two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve storm where we all went for eighteen days and um, you know, had a lot of significant damage. So we're very fortunate and um, you know, obviously, the fire department um truly believe that uh they're behind me on this and um allowing us to use the firehouses and space as we are now. But they have been really pressuring me the last month or two that uh we need to, we need to do something um to move forward.
All right, my mute, no, I'm not on mute. Sorry. Um, okay, my only question is, first off, uh, great job on saving the money for the the scuba gear and being able to use this on that, so it's not actually gonna cost the money and the the reserve fund any money. But just a quick question on um Lisa, maybe you know, if we know what the balance is of the reserve fund after this?
I would have to check, but I think it's around six hundred and forty thousand.
Sorry, tack up the dogs.
I I said um I would have to check, but I think it is around six hundred and forty thousand dollars, right around there.
So this isn't, this isn't gonna do anything to, you know, this is all good. Like, I just wanna make sure that we're not doing any damage to the reserve fund by doing this. But since you saved the money, John, on the the scuba gear, this is, it's pretty much a a wash from what you expected originally. Um, Brenda?
Thank you. Um, this is Brenda Felussy. Um, I guess these questions are for Chief Laitel. Um, what kind of weather can these sheds withstand? Um, my concern is if we get a wind event, um, can these sheds withstand that so that we don't find our emergency equipment um damaged? And um do you anticipate any issues with winter weather clearing up to the sheds? I've been in the EOC when I've had to go and be the shoveler. Um, is this going to increase the path that I will have to be shoveling between the door in the sheds?
So we'll make sure that we get you a larger shovel.
Thank you.
Or at least you see ATV with the snow plow. Um, so, you know, needless to say, um, right now, um, if the guys were to plow where the steel sheds are, um, we all know how, you know, the snow rolls off, that would be, you know, those steel containers where you plowed right up to the door. If it was a significant weather event, well, you can kiss your training center and EOC to the ground because there's your EOC that has never met the standards for the community since day one. Um, but these sheds are pretty solid um constructed. Uh, I've built the floors to withstand a more heavier weight. Um, and we went also with a larger door, um, which I got reduced rates from uh, you know, Reduced rates from uh, you know, manufacturer. Um so needless to say, I, you know, you or I couldn't buy these sheds for that price. And, you know, unfortunately, around the community, we had a couple of these uh type of storage sheds that obviously a large tree or something else fell through it. Um, you know, it's very fortunate that uh, you know, it's something that we look at at the EOC every single day of saying, I hope the trees behind us do not fall. We had four trees taken down. Uh three months prior. If we didn't, I guarantee that the training center would have had some uh destructive damage, but. You know, it obviously that the our weather events are getting worse and worse, and if we're able to buy some time um just to get some space needs and move on. Um, the nice thing is, obviously, we hopefully won't destroy too much stuff inside there, but, you know, uh, we've all seen house roofs and everything else wise. I mean. There's approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of damage in the community that have uh, we have some people still in hotels and. We have some large houses that have uh, you know, large raised ranches that the size of the oaks went right through them and, you know, it's an unfortunate situation, but that could happen probably with anything if that makes sense. Um, so we're trying to be proficient, but we're also trying to be proactive that, you know, who knows what the winter is going to bring and who knows what the other weather event's going to bring for the next year or two and. Who knows what our financial uh impacts with uh the budgets and the COVID and everything else in the world that's going to happen for the next year to two years that. Our space needs study might get pushed off for another five years and um unfortunately I don't have the space to um, you know, put anything unless the. The new Burt's Grove is putting a huge next year gym on there for for me to put everything in or a big unit. I don't know, but um. You know, Walt Will has been very supportive and let me store a lot of the cots up to the high school and we had a lot at the Burt's Grove and as we grow as a community. Um, we'll try to space these other items out. So this way here, they're at the right place. So all our apples aren't in one place, if that makes sense.
Yep. Yeah, thank, thank you so much for that um expanding on those answers. One, one other question I have then is um inventory turnover. I I know that you have a lot of different kinds of inventory there, but I think the things that um are most relevant right now are um water. If we still have MREs and PPEs, what, what do you anticipate for how many years between when we have to. Turn over those inventories and do we have that built into our budget already um to identify that we need to um, you know, replenish those inventories?
So one of the unfortunate things back in uh two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, I came back forth to the community and the prior town manager and um town council back at the time. Um, and I was almost ready to pull the plug on about a sixty to eighty thousand dollar PPE uh expense for um the Ebola um that was hitting everything. And we gambled and we rolled the dice. We bought some N ninety-fives, we bought some stuff, we we got out of it luckily. Um we were very fortunate with the shortages of uh. PPE because of world events and uh across the country that um a lot of exemptions were made as far as expiration dates. And we all know, I mean, you know, is there really an expiration date on the water? Um, a lot of it's sell by date um versus a drink by date. Um, but a lot of the water events that we have, um obviously, I was very fortunate to get six to eight pallets of free water. Um, as we move forth, a lot of that water will be handed out either for uh major fire scenes, um community events or something else. I mean. Not going to lie to you, we had a couple uh pallets that were broken and I bought uh probably about, you know, five or six cases to a couple of DPW crews. And as well as some of the contractors over in town when they were working in that um heat event that we had with the storm. So. That went a long ways, but um we try to cycle the water as far as we go out. I always try to buy one or two pallets through the fire department's budget on a yearly basis, so I have two pallets to be up and running. But I can tell you that I am never this far behind on this past storm that um for me to take two to three days to get the uh Connecticut water approvals, to get the. Uh drinking waters to be set up because we had to set a table up, we had to set the COVID distancing up, we had to put hand sanitizers out there. This was a whole new event, um nothing in in some book or class that I've ever taken. So, you know, usually we're ready to run. If I had to do something different right now as a community, I'd be looking at if we had extra money at the end of this year or something else. I'm already trying to look, but. Um, I would buy uh a lot of those uh portable, non-portable uh water tanks. And put them up and then this way here, we have four firehouses that are placed throughout this community in the best locations. I'd place those in those uh different sections of the town where then people wouldn't travel from Plains Road. Um, you know, the poor people that live up off of Plains Road that they were gridlocked with the Station four forty not being able to get past there or anything else, but. We could be placing those items up in those areas and then being able to at least uh take care of the population. So I haven't even bought those because where am I going to store those units and how am I going to take care of them? Um, so, you know, I try to make do best with what I have, but your emergency management budget in your town um is a nickel and dime. That's, that's no. Uh um, you know, offensive comment to anybody, but it's like every community, you try to make do with what you can. Um, I am very fortunate that I will be picking up a new member within the next two weeks that retired from a couple of state and federal agencies that that's all that she did was write grants. And uh she's going to be sent to work uh and she's looking because um she's already down helping us right now. So. We're very fortunate. I have a great people in the community and um we'll try to do the best with what we have, if that makes sense.
Yes, I, and again, thank you. I really appreciate all of your input and your dedication and thank you to all of your crews. Uh in DPW for all of that pre-clearing uh on the last storm to help us try to get our power back as quick as possible. We know how dedicated you are and we appreciate it.
Come on, John, handing it out with all the the state of social distance and stuff wasn't that bad.
Uh, I have to be very careful because I think I'll be attending a few state public hearings with Mr. Rosen, so. I have to be very careful what I say, but if you're not COVID trained by now and it takes uh another twenty-four hours to get crews on the road because others. States sent their crews here and have to go through COVID training, um we'll see how that makes out in public hearings, you know what I'm saying?
It'll be something. Um, okay, any uh Steve, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just two quick questions. The first was um just housekeeping. Uh what will happen to the two steel shipping containers? Will they be relocated or disposed of? And then second is um, assuming it is approved tonight, what is the timeline for completion um of these uh? Of these new structures for the fire training center?
The uh steel containers, hopefully, Mr. Rosen, do you mind if I answer, sir?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, the steel containers hopefully will be reprocessed uh either to Public Works Highway or something else. I'm sure that we can use them for something else as far as, you know, dry storage and uh different items. Um, there's some things that you can still put in there that are, you know, very fortunate. Um so, you know, the, I know the support groups have three or four of them down across from Lions Field. Um, that are very good, so we can repurpose them somewhere and do something with them. Um, as far as a timeline, um. You know, obviously, I'm here asking uh permission and, you know, the steel or the garage units are. Up at the community a lot. If you say yes now, they'll be up tomorrow morning. No, that's unfortunate. I wish it was that easy. Um, I am trying to do everything in my power and um. Fortunate enough that uh with the three bids that I went and resought, um obviously meant to, you know, the town bidding requirements, we. Were very fortunate to have one uh local retailer that lives in town that um I think he knows how important this is to the community because this is not the first time that this item or agenda's come up. So I think he knows how important it is, but with the COVID times, I can't give you an answer. I'm so, I'm nervous about it. So I would love to have them in place before the winter and getting things going. Um, but like you said, and what uh Piranha even asked, I'd like to move it once, um because once I go to do an inventory and. We have some major PPE that I have to store by dates and everything else, and then I have to go through all those boxes to see if any of it's even of relevant to the first responder level because. When we end this declaration or we look at something else and CDC says, okay, everybody should have their proper PPE. That means that some of the items I might not even be able to use. So, you know, which is fortunate enough that uh I received it here and it's something that, you know, if I can share a resource with uh the school system or somebody else. It's something that's not going to go to waste. Um, and we can, you know, obviously uh use it, uh animal control, the fire department uh and other services in town. Human services are going out to do home inspections. So if we can put a box in each home, uh each of you have to go out when they do home inspections or, you know, social service visits. Um, that's what it's about. So um as soon as you get the approval or if we do even get the approval tonight, um I'll do everything in my power to assist and help and uh make things happen.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out too that the bid itself have, has a lead time of five to seven weeks, so. If they make good on that, we should be um all set by by October at the latest.
Okay, cool. Thank, thank you.
I'm muted, sorry. I don't see anybody else's hands up. So uh Steve, do you have the, do you have the, you have the packet or you have the motion?
Yeah, I'm scrolling down now. So uh, Chairman Roost, I'm going to change a motion that be resolved by the Talon Town Council that hereby authorizes an appropriation of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. From the ambulance reserve fund to the capital improvements account to purchase two. Two by twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot craftsman garages for storage purposes approved by the Talon Town Council on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Lou, Lou, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Uh Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that passes unanimously. Um, thank you, John. Uh, that gets us to eight dash three appointments, two vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions.
We have one tonight. Uh, we have Water Pollution Control Authority has a reappointment for Bruce Allen um for a new three-year term. Oop, I don't know if any, yeah.
Yeah, Steve Jones, I'm going to change a motion to reappoint Bruce Allen of Thirteen Bayco's Road to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a term of eight twenty-six twenty twenty to eight twenty-six twenty twenty-three.
This is Brenda Felussy, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt? I'm an I, so that passes unanimously.
Can I just add? Um, I want to say thank you for Bruce stepping up and I also want to thank Matthew Penny for his service. Um, I'm the Talon Water Commission. I see that we have a resignation because they've moved out of town. So thank you for your service and I hope we get some more residents looking at some of these opportunities to contribute to our community.
Perfect. Um, that gets us to old business nine dash one, discussion of a consideration. Of a resolution to update A one seventy-six dash fifteen of the town code, town green and fire training center sign policy. And the setting of a public hearing there on of September eighth, twenty twenty. So we have the final redlined version here. And we are going to be setting the public hearing for our next meeting on this. Um, Mike, you want to?
Yes, I was going to jump in. So we we set the agenda item up tonight that um if the council is ready to set the public hearing for September eighth. Uh, certainly, there's, if there's discussion tonight, we can uh push that, but uh what what the the uh business, the, sorry, the agenda item tonight. Um, I did redline it with all of the edits from last week, so it's all, this on page thirty-one of the packet is the full and final redlined version. Um, also, one point of discussion we might want to have tonight is to um discuss about the. In terms of the days of recognition or weeks or months of recognition, um we had attached to the packet. Uh, a list of uh days, weeks, and months of recognition that potentially could be eligible to be um. A a list that we have on the side, ready to go in case there's a request to do this. So this, you know, it's quite, it's a couple pages worth, but. Um, but that's just up for the discussion for tonight if council wants to discuss about the, all of these or some of these or. You know, or some other list you may have compiled, but uh that would probably have to be built into the uh policy to say that, you know, for recognition. Signs, please, you know, for acceptable recognition signs, please see the attached list. That's not, that's not currently written into the policy at the moment. We just have to add that. But then you can vote on it as amended later tonight.
Well, well, we would be um, we would be voting on setting the public hearing, right? So if we decide to say to add that, you could add that before the the actual public hearing.
Right, the public hearing will be advertised with the final language, but uh as drafted at the moment, we don't have any language that pertains to this, so.
Okay, um, so let's get to it then. Um, assuming everybody has gone through and looked at this. Um, I had a couple of things that I found, Mike, that I think we need to correct and then um. And then the discussion on, like you said, the the um list of dates kind of a thing. Does anybody have anything specific? They have on their list that they want to talk about or anything that they see that needs to be corrected before I get to mine? Lou?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I um I just wanted to comment on, I did have a chance to review the redlined uh version uh prior to today's date. And um, I think that I would um support Mr. Rosen's proposal of including language inside there, saying that. The uh, that these, the dates that are listed or the months or the recognition periods, uh which he had so adeptly pulled up. Uh, since I was able to find quite such a uh a thorough list, um that uh that we include that as part of the language and for anything. Above and beyond that, it would have to go for a request uh to the town council is what my position would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Uh Brenda?
Yeah, Brenda Felussy, um my concern is that the um, the recognition list can change. Um, because of, you know, presidential proclamation, so if we create a list instead of creating some language that say special days recognized by presidential proclamation. Just using that phrase, we might have to be updating the list every time a new proclamation comes out um by the president. Um, I also would like, I was just thinking about this, um Talon's specific dates, you know, I don't think that there's anything coming up. And we just had our three hundredth, but um we might want to find some sort of language that would include. Um, the town of Talon recognized holidays or observances so that each time the historical society or another group wants to recognize a. Um, talent events like that, that they don't have to come up with something special. I I hope you understand what I'm saying. And I'm sure that's just a matter of a sentence somewhere, but those were my concerns. Um, I I like to have open-ended rather than restrictive language.
Okay, so um, let's see. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss about it? Okay, Mike, I had a couple on B four. Um, it looks like the remainder of the sentence after um or another office designated. But the town manager, the comma at the green, uh like, so B four says organizations placing signs at the designated area must register the sign with the town manager's office. Or other office designated by the town manager. Then it says comma, if placed at the green comma before placing the sign. So I think that there, can we just have it say um town manager's office or any of the designated by the town manager um before placing the sign? Get rid of the if placed at the green.
Um, I can make that edit if if that's agreeable, sure.
Okay, and then um on B six, um, the. Recognition day, I I agree with Brenda here on putting some language in around um. This is special recognized days by presidential proclamation. And I think that would help than actually listing the full list because it is three pages long. So um, is there a link? That we have that shows all the um that you went to to print out that list, like one, one place that shows the presidential proclamation list?
Um, I believe we, yeah, and I think Brenda, you had sent it to me. Um, do you want that, like?
There is, but unfortunately it could change each time the webpage is updated and that can uh get updated each time the administration changes. Um, so.
Is it on a, is it on a dot org site? Like, is, could we, could we say the presidential proclamation list as listed on the whatever site?
I have the app page. Yeah, I don't know if it's a dot org. Um, I think I had used something that was through like um Wikipedia that linked to. Um, you know, whitehouse.gov, um but that also, that's only presidential. I don't know if we wanted to take a look at state. Um, also, I never found one for a state, so I apologize for not finding that information.
Thank you for finding what you did find. Um, okay, and then uh. D enforcement, if you can, uh it's remove at either designated site because it's only the one site now.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, that's in number two. The town hall has, the town has the right to limit the number of signs at either designated site.
Right, so of just of signs to no more than five signs, yep.
Correct. Yeah. Um, as far as the list, I'm good with leaving it as the, the presidential proclamation list. Um, I think that I looked over that list pretty intensively, and it was three pages. It covered all kinds of things that I didn't even think of, but I don't know that I want to leave it wide open, because, you know, the day was National Left-handed Day. Like, you know, there's a bazillion out there. I think we could literally have, um, anybody who wanted to recognize any sort of thing, but, um, I think the presidential proclamation list is a good, is a good start. I don't know about everybody else. Um, and if you want, if you, let's talk about that, because that's the piece that, nobody has any other updates with any of the redlined stuff. So, do we want to list in here um, what is going to be used for recognition? And if so, do we want to say it's the presidential list, or do we just want to leave it open-ended? How do we want Mike to, to handle this in the, in the finalized version? Um, uh, Brenda?
Yeah, I, I think it's open-ended, but I'm really looking forward to hear what the residents want. Um, you know, uh, I'm looking forward to having the, the public hearing on this so that we can see what they want to celebrate, what they want to recognize, and if this list is, you know, inclusive enough, not inclusive enough. Um, because honestly, we don't know until they start talking, you know, and they start, um, giving us some input. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to that part of the discussion in our public hearing.
Thank you. Um, Lou?
Uh, well, I understand, and I think, Madam Chair, while I understand what, uh, Ms. Felucia is saying, that I think it's something that, if we're going to make this proposal, that we would need to include that language inside there, and then if it's something that, uh, that they, uh, that, that we feel that the town has spoken and saying that they want to leave it open-ended, and then we can make that change appropriately, but I think that we would need to put some type of delineation in the language right now. And, uh, for myself, I feel that, that the presidential proclamation, uh, one is, is appropriate, since those are ones that are recognized, and that we wouldn't be sort of, um, going off the cop, cop as far as, uh, certain recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Uh, John?
Thank you. I, I don't support leaving it open-ended. I think that has the potential to get really messy. So, I do support, uh, this presidential proclamation list. I think it's very comprehensive. There's a lot of things in here that I didn't even know about. So, I would support leaving this list here. Uh, I, I think leaving it open-ended, eh, um, I, I don't support that. I just think it could, it could get too, it could get too, so that's where I am on this.
Thank you, John. Um, Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, um, I'm kind of split on whether or not to keep it open-ended or not. I think the, the mid, the middle ground might be more effective to, to leave it to the town manager's office or another body within the town manager's office to, um, kind of just do an annual or bi- bi-annual check-in to see if there are any changes, and report back to the council if anything needs to be added for any particular reason. If, you know, for future presidents, um, it just seems like this shouldn't be obviously set in stone. I mean, go back and review other policies that it's, it probably is assumed, but if it needs to be written in that, you know, the town manager's office should make sure that the list is up to date and things haven't been added or removed, might make sense.
Okay, um, Cassandra, do you have an opinion on this?
I just think if we just state that we're recognizing everything that's by presidential proclamation and list it's subject to change, that could be inclusive enough. We can include all of that information there, and it can be used as a reference guide. But again, uh, subject to change. If someone brings it up that there's a new day on there, it can be updated if we miss it.
Okay, um, Kurt?
Thank you, uh, Chairman Nuccio. Um, I, I'm in favor of, um, having this as, uh, have us to figure out what we want on there, have it, uh, definitive, or kind of like Lou's, um, point that he brought up, that it can be, we could change it in the public hearing if, if we, we so determine so by, uh, public input, um, I, I just want to know, you know, if we leave it open-ended, who gets to decide what is going to be honored, recognized, or, or not? Um, I don't want that to be left to a non-elected town official. So, um, that's, I would like it either to have some way of, either a council making a decision on that in the future, or, or have it, uh, kind of clearly defined when we make this, uh, ordinance or whatever it is. So, thanks.
Okay, um, so from an administration point, Mike, if we said, um, if we had you put in here that it's on the presidential proclamation list, and, um, that that might be subject to change, um, and then if somebody wanted something that wasn't on there, I would assume the direction would be that it would have to go to council. So, you're not left, uh, having to decide the yea or nay.
So, um, so, okay, so this is Mike Rosen, town manager. What's, if a request comes in, uh, for any recognition day, month, or week, um, I will, or my staff, or probably, let's, me at first, just to see how, how it's going, but I will go to the list to make sure that that day, month, or week is on the list. If it is, there's no issue. If it turns out that that day, week, or month, uh, is not on the recognized list, um, I mean, the policy would, that we don't currently have an outlet for that. Um, I mean, at the moment, it would probably be a rejection, but we, if you want to create another outlet, then we would have to bring it to council to consider, which would obviously take more time, possibly past the time, uh, of the day, month, or week. So, I just want to put that, you know, we, we want to make sure that people, if they want to sort of appeal, or, or go outside of the recognized list, do so in a timely way.
Thank you. Um, John?
Uh, I, I don't agree with that. I, I think we need to have a definitive list that people can choose from, and if somebody has some that's outside that list, then I think we have a mechanism that says, eh, that says, eh, it's not part of the list, so it's not, it's not allowed. I think, I think we need to have some restrictions around this. I don't think if we, if we say that somebody can just petition the town council, I don't think the town, both of us, this one or a future one, should have the ability to make a decision like that. I think it needs to be more defined. So, I support this presidential proclamation list and, and nothing beyond that. That's where I am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kurt?
Uh, thank you, Tammy. Um, so I guess maybe just a question, um, kind of going back to similar legal issues with the, uh, flag policy. Um, once we start allowing signs like this to be put up, you know, is there any, you know, could we deny future, um, uh, recognition events that maybe are on the list, but people could make the argument that it's now on the forum or what have you? So, I, that's, um, that's a question I, I obviously don't know, and, uh, I, I really, you know, I want to make Mike's job as easy as possible, and if it's not on the list, I don't want him or his staff to be put in that position of yes, yea, or nay on anything. So, I want there to be a, some recourse. If we determine we could, if there's a, a way we could have yes or no from a town council vote, I would like it to come to a town council decision. So, petition the council to have their, uh, recognition, or their event, or month recognized, uh, and have be a lot of people on the green. I think that's appropriate.
Uh, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would echo what, uh, Mr. Reagan had, uh, stated earlier, um, as well as, uh, Mr. Sanders to some degree, where I think that we need to have it cer- uh, certainly delineated. I think that once we go outside a, uh, the recognized months, days, weeks, as, uh, listed by presidential proclamation, that it gets into, uh, murky areas. I think that, that it's something that, uh, that I, I would rather have a clearly delineated, uh, line saying that these are the ones that we will, uh, that we follow, and I think that anything beyond that can, uh, it opens us up to various issues. So, uh, I'm in line with, uh, Mr. Reagan on his, uh, on his position. Thank you.
Um, I'm in line with that also. Um, I'm good with the presidential proclamation list. I think it's pretty friggin' inclusive. There was a lot of stuff on there, stuff that I didn't even, you know, I didn't even know. There was some really good days that, uh, I wasn't aware of, so, um, I'm good with the presidential proclamation and leaving it at that. Recognizing, Mike, that it can change.
Yes.
You know, with new proclamations.
Can we talk about for a moment, though, just about keeping track of the signs on the green, though? Because I know I had workshop this with my staff a little bit, and some of them are on the, you know, Mike's on the phone, for example. So, as the policy shows, there's a limit of no more than five total signs per day, and while the policy does give preference to events over recognitions, I'm envisioning a scenario where we may have, as you see from the list, it's very inclusive. You might have multiple days, weeks, months that are all coinciding with one another, and if we're limited to just having five on the green plus events, I'm, including events, I should say, then wh- who do you bump? Who do you reject? Who do you, you know, I'm trying to, there's no mechanism in place for, eh, you, first of all, we can't have twenty signs out there, but we need to be able to, be able to, you know, is it first in, last out, you know, last, eh, that, as, as I'm trying to talk about that a little bit, please.
Um, my opinion on that is, like I said, events have priority. If there are three signs up that are some kind of recognition sign, and an event sign comes in, then I would say the last one up, um, or, eh, you know, it, it's first come, first served. If somebody has one up, and it's a one-week one, and somebody has one that, that's a second one, is a one-month one, and the third one is another one-week one, um, I would say you would the last one in kind of a thing. But, uh, let's, let's talk about that. Uh, Brenda?
Thank you. Um, eh, to, I had a question about something else, but we'll go on this for now. Um, I think that if there's a number of recognition items coming up, and they vary, um, in, from one day to one week to one month, that if we explain to the people who are trying to put their signs up, what kind of restrictions we have, and ask them if they can work together to pick some days that are, um, not overlapping, that I, I think that the residents would be amenable to that. They would be more than willing to work together to be able to celebrate, uh, all their differences and their, uh, recognitions. Um, I don't think, you know, eh, I believe everybody would work together in our community rather than start fighting over the signs. So, um, I, I have a lot of hope that we would be, that the people putting the signs up can work this out between them if we give them, you know, what's happening. So.
Thank you. Um, Lou?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to that, um, I, I, I agree with Brenda, where I think that, uh, that if we leave it, uh, that I would like to leave it open to people, but at the same time, we are, as a town council, have to also look at the worst-case scenario where people don't agree, and that's why we need to set certain parameters on it. Uh, where I think it's something that, uh, I think Mike, uh, Mr. Rosen brought up a, a valid point, where if it's, uh, something that you have overlapping requests, we, eh, would, that we would have to take a look at it, or that his office would have to take a look at it, where I think the preference would be is if it's a month-long event, um, and that it's, you know, that the, that we're making recognition on, and then there, or, I'm sorry, a month-long recognition, and then there's an event that comes up, that if that sign for the event has been up for several weeks, and then you have one for an event, and if that would be the fifth sign, then that one that's been up for several weeks already would, uh, would be, would be removed. I, so I guess, going along how you put it, uh, Ms. Nuccio before, uh, Chairman Nuccio, that, uh, it would be, uh, first one in, first one removed. Uh, that way, eh, the one that's been up the longest, that that would be the first one to be removed, if it's something that's been up there, uh, where we have a, uh, a limit of five, and the fifth one's coming out, then we remove the one that's been up there longest. That would just be my, uh, preference and recommendation.
Thank you. I think I agree with you. I think we have to consider if something is up for a month, and an event comes, and an event's going to be up for two weeks, um, you know, the month one will be up for two weeks, and then the event will be up for two weeks. If it's a day, you don't want to bump one that's like a day, because this says it'll go up one day before and two days after. So, you'd want to leave the day one. And then the, the week, same thing. If it's going up for a week, um, I would think the one that is a month can go down because it's going to have, it has four weeks to be up kind of a thing, kind of like an equal representation. That's probably, wait, was that too confusing, Mike? Did you get what I'm saying?
Well, no, no, I think I understand. I mean, it's, so we're kind of leaving it up to the situation-by-situation basis. Uh, there's going to have to be some discretion in the manager's office, or perhaps some, uh, you know, working with the requesters to say, okay, can you wait till this day? We'll only have four signs that day, then we can slide that in. You, you are good for your week at that point. It will be a lot of, uh, I imagine it's going to be administratively something that we're going to have to keep track of, uh, probably a lot of phone calls, and then also, you know, uh, uh, obviously, the, the person, the, the organization or the group that puts the sign also has to remove the sign, so we'd have to call them, let them know your sign's actually coming down a little early. Can you please take it early so we can go put another sign out? I imagine, I'm, I'm, I, I agree with Brenda. I, I hope that everyone will be amenable to the situation and not take it personally.
Yep. I think, uh, I, I think you, I think you can probably, i- if we put in something that, you know, eh, we can't have more than five signs. If there are more than five signs, then it will be worked out, a schedule will be worked out.
So, I could add that to the last D, D two, uh, D, D two. So, if there are more than, if there are requests for more than five signs on a given day, five signs on a given day, a schedule will be worked out?
Yep. You know, the events obviously have preference, and then it comes down to any recognition ones working out a schedule.
Okay, so the town has the right to limit the number of signs to no more than five signs on any day. If there are, if there are requests for more than five signs on a given day, a schedule will be worked out by the town manager's office.
Uh, right, yeah. Um, recognition will be... Okay, uh, I think that's good. So, um, I think those are the only changes. Do we want to do a straw poll on the presidential, on the, um, the recognition days? Do we need to, um?
I have one more segment to remove, if that's okay. Under B seven, it says in the designated areas, did, was that one of the ones you removed, Tammy?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I didn't have that down in my notes.
That, yep, in seven, dead, an area.
Yes, area.
I didn't write that down in my notes. I thought we missed it. Thank you.
Sorry, yep. Um, all right, so do we want to do a, a quick straw poll on the, um, what the recognition days will be in the wording? Uh, I'm gonna, go ahead, Mike?
I was gonna say, the word, we have to also decide where we want to put this wording. I'm thinking in B six, maybe a new second sentence.
Yeah, uh, in B six, because that's the recognition sentence. So, um, "Request for a day, week, or month recognition sign must be scheduled with the town manager's office, and preference will be given to events over recognition if there are more than five signs on the green." "A recognition can be up to the day before and be taken down within two days after the recognized day, week, or month." I would, um, and then maybe wording can be, um, "Approved recognition events, um, are subject to change by presidential proclamation," or "The approved events are, uh, the presidential proclamation list and are subject to change."
Okay, well, I, I, I noted what you said. I'm not sure if, uh, others want to weigh, weigh in on that.
Are we good with that? "Approved proclamation list is the presidential, or the approved list is a presidential proclamation list and is subject to change." Is it ready? Are we good with that?
Uh, Steve Jones, I'm fine with that.
Kurt? You gotta say it.
I'm good with that.
Cassandra?
Yeah, that, that sounds fine. We can look at it, too, after it's written to make sure it fits. John?
I like it.
Lou?
Yeah.
Brenda?
Uh, with reservation, because I don't believe that the list of presidential proclamations is, um, fully inclusive of the diversity in our, in our community. So.
Okay. Um, and I'm good with that, Mike. So, I think you've got a, you can go ahead and make that change.
Okay.
Add that in. And then I don't think there's anything else on here that we need to... Add that in. And then I don't think there's anything else on here that we need to discuss before setting the public meeting unless somebody has something else that is not, has not already been discussed.
Well, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just want clarification. I mean, uh, with Ms. Lucy, is it, is it a yes or is it a no vote? Uh, I mean, I know that you said with reservation, but is it a yes or a no?
It's a yes with the reservation.
I'm sorry?
It's a yes with the reservation and I apologize. I keep getting the error message that my internet is, is unstable. So I'm sorry if I'm cutting out, but it is a yes with the reservation.
Okay. All right. So if nobody has anything else, then Steve?
Chairman Nutio, I didn't hear the motion that be resolved by the town council that hereby approves the amendments to the attached town green and fire training center policy in chapter A one seventy-six dash fifteen of the town code originally adopted on January twenty-third, two thousand and one for a public hearing to be held on September eighth, twenty twenty at seven P M via Zoom remote meeting.
Lou, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that passes unanimously. We'll set the public um, hearing for our next meeting on September eighth. Um, and Mike, well, you'll do the e-blast on that, right?
Yes, we will put out the public hearing based on the amendments um, that were made tonight. Yep, it'll go in the paper. It'll go out.
Okay. Uh, and Lisa, just so you know, when we get to the next one, I don't know if you have your worksheet available for the general fund stuff. It's in the, yeah, it's in the file. So, um, I have a couple of things I wanted to look at specifically, so I just wanted you to be prepared. Uh, that gets us to nine dash two. Consideration of a resolution to rescind the issuance of bonds approved by resolution on July nineteenth, twenty nineteen for a fire truck rescue and approval to provide seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from general fund unassigned fund balance for the financing of the fire rescue truck and setting of a public hearing thereon for September eighth, twenty twenty.
Um, okay, I'll try to take the lead on this. Uh, so Mike Rosen, town manager. Um, this is uh, an old business item that has been um, tabled for probably about four to five months at this point, just based on the COVID nineteen situation. So if um, the council remembers in February, we had talked, uh, the council had talked about potentially um, using fund balance to pay for the fire rescue truck that was originally part of the capital budget um, for, I, I guess it would be the eighteen, nineteen fiscal or nineteen, twenty fiscal year. And uh, you know, at the time, when the, when it was originally passed during the capital budget process, it was slated to be uh, purchased through a bond, bond authorization. But I believe even at that point, back, this was before my tenure, uh, I started in September of twenty nineteen. The previous town manager had mentioned that there could be room for paying a partially or in full for the fire truck with cash to not have to borrow the full seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount. So that was, um, that had been talked about. Um, it was one of the councils, uh, I've heard, I heard it a few times in my first few months that they would like to put it onto an agenda. And as luck would have it, when we put it onto the agenda and set the public hearing to have this discussion, that was the first meeting that was canceled due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So the public hearing was canceled and never was had. Um, we waited four or five months at this point because we wanted to see where the books were going to close for the end of the fiscal year, ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty, um, before putting this back on your radar. Um, obviously, you know, as mentioned earlier in the evening, um, you know, the, we, we want, the COVID nineteen is very unpredictable. Uh, it's good to have flexibility where the, you know, nimbleness to, to do things with cash and stuff. But I think we're at a point now that the books have been closed for the last year and the fire rescue truck is, I, I know John's still on the line, John Laitel. Um, he's doing what he needs to do to get the bid documents together to go out to actually um, get the truck. But we're gonna need to determine once and for all what the funding source is gonna be. Because at some point, he's gonna need to pay a bill and in order for him to do that, we have to have a guaranteed funding source. Now, right now, the funding source is still bonding, but that could change based on how the conversation goes tonight and the public hearing in the, uh, the next meeting. Um, uh, earlier in the evening, it was asked what the useful life of this truck would be. Uh, I believe the correct answer to that is between fifteen and twenty years with the hope that it would go twenty years. Um, so that's, I had asked John offline and he confirmed it's slated to go twenty years. Um, that's sort of what I have for the preamble. Um, it's, again, this is an old business item because it had been tabled back in March. Um, so if anybody has any questions, I know a few of us are all here between John, Lisa, myself, uh, members of the fire company are here as well, the deputy chief and some other uh, members. Um, thank you.
Okay, um, I have numbers questions for Lisa based on what that we have in our document. Um, but I don't know if everybody else wants to have general discussion before I, I um, bring that up with Lisa or if there's preference for the numbers conversation first. Um, Lou, your hand is up.
Well, I'll, I'll hold off my uh, questions until after the numbers. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the numbers. It's uh, more, uh, my questions relate more to the uh, to the past history of it where I looked at the uh, prior minutes when this was discussed and the bond was initially approved, but I'll hold off until after we have the discussion with the uh, with regarding the numbers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Lisa.
Hello?
So, um, I have a, a couple of questions. I was looking at your, um, the sheets that you included and I was also looking at the worksheet that you had sent prior, um, back when we were talking about this uh, a while ago. And um, updated the numbers to look at a couple of things here. So one of the things that I wanted to ask about is, um, in the sheet that you gave us, you have uh, in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one estimated budget year, you have the full seven hundred and eight, seven seventy-two that the board of ed um, turned back. But in their meeting, they decided on a thirty, forty, thirty split, thirty percent going to one percent fund, forty percent going to the uh, COVID fund and thirty percent staying um, with the town uh, to go back into the uh, general fund. Um, so can we change that number to be the four ninety-six, one forty that the um, board of ed will be getting?
I could.
Okay.
Once I, um,
And I used the, I used the number, the seven oh eight, seven seventy-two that you have in your memo with the thirty, forty, thirty split is uh, two hundred, two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars would stay in the um, in the, the unassigned fund.
I had two hundred and twelve.
Yep, two thou- hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-two. Did I say that wrong?
You said two oh two.
Sorry, two hundred and twelve, six thirty-two.
Right. And you had, uh,
So that would make the total for transfers out to education reserve fund be four ninety-six, one forty?
Yeah, I'm just double checking it.
I know. That's okay.
Two eighty-three, five oh nine for COVID?
Two eighty-three, five oh nine for COVID, two twelve, six thirty-two for the one percent fund.
Four ninety-six, one forty-one.
Yes. And then, um, that would change, I believe, um, the, let's see, where is it? That would also then change on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty estimated um, actual line for excess of revenues and other financing sources. It's got the, um, I'm sorry, what, hold on. I'm down further. Hold on. Let me figure out where the heck I am. Oh, there it is. Uh, yeah, where it says committed for education and other funds, that would make that number uh, one million, two, seven seventy-five instead of the one, two, one, five, four oh seven.
Just give me a second here, please.
Take your time. And if you wanted to just take these away.
What number did you have?
On your original, on the agenda, it has one million, two fifteen, four oh seven, and that's committed for education and other fund use.
Yep.
And if you take out the two, twelve, six thirty-two, that makes that number one million, two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
All right, I had a dollar difference, but that's.
Yeah, it's a dollar.
Just give me a minute.
No, 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 take your time.
I'm just changing it in my worksheet. And then we had the seven oh eight becomes four nine, six, four one.
Four ninety-six, one forty for the next year?
I had one forty-one. I can make it one forty.
It's a dollar, doesn't matter. Yeah.
One forty. Um, yep, and I'm trying to get down to the bottom.
So that makes the, the nu- the number, um, the committed for education and other fund usage, the assumption that the two eighty-three for COVID was a one-year thing and would go away, that would make that next number, which you had nine fifty-eight, four oh seven.
Right.
That would make that seven nineteen, two sixty-seven.
Okay.
So if I'm looking at that right, then that means at the end of that year, instead of eleven, four nine, we've got eleven, eight, three percent.
Hmm.
Okay. All right. Um, and then the only other question that I had on here was kind of a, Mike, this is kind of more of a you question. Um, down on where it says assigned with designation for specific purpose and future budget. This year, we were doing, remember the six hundred and fifteen thousand, but we did five hundred thousand out of the fund and a hundred and fifteen out of the tax stabilization fund?
Yes.
Um, that left a hundred and ten thousand dollar balance in the tax stabilization fund. Uh, and next year, we have the four fifty and that was the step down. Um, but if we use, like, that's only basically fifty thousand less than the other one. If we used the remainder or some of that hundred thousand above, that would change the number, but I don't think we have to do anything with that. It's just kind of a note because it goes from four fif- from five hundred to four fifty, then to three hundred.
Right, yeah, there, there, it's not an equal, don't forget, originally, we had done six hundred, four fifty, three hundred. So perhaps it didn't update properly. We might be able to.
I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying that it's something that we can look at, like, less usage of the fund if we use more of the tax stabilization. Depending on what we have at the end of the year, if there's any play in numbers there, throwing more into the tax stabilization area would reduce the fund usage in further years out, which would keep us around the twelve percent mount for um, the total unassigned by yet.
Okay, that's a good, good note.
So, um, if we can just update this exhibit before the, the public hearing, well, Lisa, you just updated it.
Pretty much. Did you want me to change that four hundred and fifty thousand?
That, I think, is a Mike decision. Like, you know, I,
Yeah, well, we,
go off and figure, you know, talk about that and how you want to reflect the, the step down from the five hundred thousand, like, through what, for the next couple of years?
Yeah, Lisa, we can connect on that. Just, we'll talk about if we can, if you want to use up the rest of the stabilization. Uh, it's early yet, though.
Exactly.
For next year's budget, we don't know where we're at.
I'm comfortable around the twelve percent. I just, you know, after I started looking at the numbers and that, you know, it's, if you take out something here to use the tax stabilization or whatever, it's, it's gonna keep it around the twelve percent. So, you know, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm comfortable around the twelve percent, but I think that's just a note for you to kind of look at the step down for the next couple of years.
Okay.
So that's all I had for numbers conversation. Um, Lou, did you want to go back to what you had now that the, the numbers stuff is done? And then I have other comments, but um, we'll go around everybody else first. So Lou?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, because I was just, I mean, there was some comments that were made earlier, some uh, exchanges uh, with the town council via email regarding the uh, the switching over from bonding over to purchasing. And looking at the minutes from backing, uh, when this was discussed back on July ninth of twenty nineteen, it, it stayed pretty clearly inside those minutes that the, uh, it's, as, at that time, the funding would be known and the council would take appropriate action to appropriate funds from the bond balance rather than this particular authorization. So I think that some of the issues that we're discussing here, this is something that was already discussed, proposed and, and decided by the prior town council, including yourself, as well as uh, Ms. Felusi, uh, and, and Mr. Reagan. So I think this is something that, that has been discussed, that was discussed previously about using the bonding just for the purpose of being able to authorize the purchase and then looking at making the payments. I mean, it, it's, it states it in the minutes, um, as far as that there was a discussion on this. So for some of the people saying, or some of the concerns about this being a recent change in uh, in, in direction by the town council, I, I don't think that's, that's really accurate. I think that this town council has, uh, we, when we discussed it earlier, that we uh, had decided that this would be an appropriate action to be taken uh, in, in concurrent with what the prior town council had proposed. So, um, I think that this is something that does have merit, where in looking at the numbers, that we'd be saving ourselves about two hundred thousand dollars in interest over the period of life of the, uh, of the uh, uh, of the fire engine, where the bond would be lasting as long as a fire engine. And then we'd be paying a substantial amount of interest over it. And as uh, discussed, and it, more to my point, uh, to the question I put forward earlier, we don't know, some people are saying that we could possibly see about renegotiating the bond at a later point in time. We don't know if that's gonna be feasible. So I think that this is something that is an appropriate um, action and I, it's something that I would support and that, uh, I mean, that's just my comments that I like to make. I think that the, 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 the suggestions you made about looking at uh, at the different funds and how to, how to, how to incorporate payment on it, uh, rather than, you know, using some of the different funds that you had gone over, I think is something that is appropriate and, and would be, uh, would be helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Uh, Brenda?
Yes, um, I'd just like to point out that just because a discussion was had does not mean that there is a favorable or unfavorable outcome about that discussion. Um, and it does not mean that it was unanimous. I did not uh, support using the fund balance back then for the fire truck. And I am, again, uh, very hesitant to do so. We had a public hearing in which the town council and the public all agreed to bond for this item. So the previous town council had approved the bonding and the public had approved the bonding. Um, so to, to say that, you, you'd have to go back further. There's a longer history than since, than just since July ninth. So, um, I want to make that clear that, again, a discussion that being had does not mean that there was a favorable or unfavorable outcome uh, to that discussion. And it did not note who was approving and, or disapproving um, in that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassandra?
I was just wondering if we would be able to hear from anyone in the fire department, Laitel or uh, Ruiz or anyone there that might be able to add some of their thoughts into this discussion or if that's for a little bit down the road here.
Um, in regards to the financing?
Well, I mean, they may have some thoughts about why, yeah, part of that financing and also why the fire truck is, you know, needed sooner than later and, and the life of the fire truck, is it related to the percentage interest rate that we might have to pay off?
Well,
Maybe it's a later discussion then.
Well, if I, Cassandra, I could, I could try and then certainly if, if John wants to add, but I can say that the timing shouldn't be affected whether it's paid for via cash or, or bonded. Uh, if, my understanding is that John has already begun the preliminary, you know, scope of work and the bid documents. So, um, really what it comes down to is when a bill is invoiced to us for the work, we're gonna have to know where to pay it out of. And that, that's what, I mean, we're getting close to that, though. Maybe, John, you can fill us in on where the process is at this point, but, um, but the, the truck itself, whether it's funded one way or the other, it's gonna be the same truck and it's gonna be the same timeframe.
Okay, good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Cassandra, just to let you know, I sent people to the FDIC in two thousand and thirteen to start replacing this truck. And then unfortunately, the prior councils, the prior management obviously pushed it off because there was other um, more important factors in town as far as either town buildings or other town projects that went through bonding and different items and, um, the rest. And, um, the rescue truck obviously just took a backseat for a few years. Um, we tried to budget for trucks to last twenty years. The oldest truck that we have on the road right now that responds to your house is thirty-two years old. Um, so needless to say, most of the trucks that we have always purchased, we try to make it twenty years. The last few trucks, similar to the one that is out right now for refurb that you guys all just approved for a refurb, I should have dumped, because we got our money out of it, and it's twenty years old. You get what you pay for. Unfortunately, this rescue truck, I will be upfront and honest with everyone that's on a meeting tonight, which Deputy Chief Dogan is on a meeting, and Carl would probably agree with me. When I took over twenty years ago as a chief, I had to keep my mouth shut, because I was just taking over. We bought a rescue truck that is a different type of manufacturer, that is not lasting as long as our other apparatus that we spent the extra money in the dollar value of, which you can, you can put any extra value, and you can get the years out of it. We bought a manufacturer that has been costing us anywhere between ten, five, twenty thousand dollars a year to keep maintaining and replacing or fixing. And when that rescue truck is down, that is the bread and butter that brings in the revenue to this community when I eighty-four is shut down, and I'm gridlocking the Tana Talon and Vernon with major accidents or major house fires, because that's the, that's the toolbox on wheels. We are trying to also be proactive to cut the costs down, to put a squad type of unit in this community that we can end up making sure that we have two trucks equally the same for standardization to respond, and not worry about replacing one major truck from year to year. So we sent people in two thousand and thirteen, we paid to send people to build specs, threw the specs away. A few years ago, we built the specs again. Well, every year that goes by, the cost goes up by twenty to thirty percent. So we started off at buying this apparatus for four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Wait another year, it's another seventy-five thousand dollars.
We're not waiting.
With the Co- with the COVID, we don't know what the timeline or the delivery date might be. So Carl Dogan actually spoke up at a town meeting way back in twenty years ago, and Carl is a de- is my deputy chief right now. Um, but Carl, you know, thought that we would end up going with two units, um, from back to back, from side to side. So when that truck goes out right now, we take all those jaws of life and all the important factors and equipment, and we throw in the back of a service truck to cut somebody out of a car or to do a specialized rescue. So right now, we have one major unit. We are fortunate enough to be proficient and effective where we budgeted for a service truck when we bought the last ambulance, because we did a remount and saved the community eighty thousand dollars. And we built, we built a secondary small rescue truck that's on the other side of town. So we're being proactive, but if you'd like, I, I'll dump the other, the other apparatus that I have that are twenty years old, because you got your monies out of it. Take the, take the dollar value and split it by twenty years and look at it, what it costs over the population of the town for dollar values. We got a bang out of our buck. The last nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-four fire trucks, we refurbished. They're still on the road. So we've been very proficient as far as the economy, the money. If unfortunately, right now, the COVID times and the economy, if that's not COVID today, it's not going to be September eleventh next year or something else, something pops up every single year. What would you like me to do? Look what happened to the community devastating with the Burt's Grove School, and how much money and everything else. Luckily, we were able to force that through the state and the grants, and, and we were very proactive with the superintendent being, um, ahead of the curve and getting most of the money, um, approved and funded, and not costing us a lot of money. I don't know what's going to happen to Station one forty. I mean, we're, you know, that's one of the things where, where we're trying to do with additions and a space need study. I'm hoping in five years that I don't have mud on my face saying, uh, we got to replace Station one forty. Um, that's why we're trying to do additions off the side of it, so if we have to just replace the apparatus space. So it, this, this has been a long time coming, um, and unfortunately, it's, it's on the agenda right now, and it's moving forth. I've already wasted enough time staff for a year and a half of looking at different types of apparatus and, and different units. We're going to be going with a squad type of unit, um, to replace this rescue truck, because of manpower and everything else with the COVID. Do you think I actually have everyone responding to every call? My manpower is down. Volunteers don't want to come out to every single type of call or anything else, so I have to rethink my, you know, objections and, and my thinking, um, to be more proficient. We're, we're still running a very streamlined, uh, staffing during the daytime, and the calls are still going through. When College View opens up and these other additions, and if Santini comes in with apartments and the rest of it down the road, I'm playing catch-up here, so I'm trying to be proficient where if I can run one truck and one apparatus on both sides of town, um, that will be a benefit to the community, if that makes sense.
And, and John, I guess the, the one thing that I just wanted to verify maybe for the record is where are we at with the bid process? Is it, uh, in progress? Are you close to?
No.
Getting?
Nope. I've looked at over fourteen at different apparatuses from different communities. I have, uh, eight different sets of specs. I just put a flash drive together for the three captains. They've had a flash drive for the last two weeks. We're going to try to narrow it down to a single manufacturer, where I'm going to try to save the community money by going after manufacturers and saying, hey, I'm copying the same set of specs. So if I can save engineering costs and build another truck that has already been designed and built, then I should be able to save about eighty to ninety thousand dollars, um, or a hundred thousand dollars of engineering specs. Um, so we're at that point now, but the thing is, is do I start having discussions with manufacturers when this has been already, how, how long, I mean, I, I can't waste my, most of the staff that I had looking at trucks since two thousand and thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, they're like, uh, we're not interested in sitting on the committee anymore. I can't blame them, but I'm going to come forth to the council and say, guess what? I, I got a, I got a prog- uh, progressive, uh, manufacturer, uh, we have a demo unit, or we have another set of specs, and I might come forth and say, hey, I'm asking, and which I know there's a few people in this community that really hate when I come for bid waivers, but bid waivers are smart if you're looking at the big picture. It's not singling a different manufacturer, but it's about saving money, similar to what we just ended up doing with the air packs and saving this community almost fifty thousand dollars. So I'm all about working, I'm all about trying to save, but, um, I just need the direction, and, um, obviously, we're, we're here again tonight. So do I have a set of specs? No. Do I have a handful of them that we can pretty much copy? Yeah, um, and obviously, I have to report to, I mean, obviously Chairman Roos is on the phone tonight. If you want to ask the, uh, the chairman as, uh, you know, I, I report to him as the fire chief. I report to you as a director of public safety, which the fire chief reports to the public safety director, so it's, uh, it's interesting, my job. But, um, like I said, they're, they're behind me, I, I'm pretty positive. Um, and, and they want to get moving, too. They're, they're upset because the rescue truck goes down. I can, if you want the DOT inspections, because we're one very few of departments around the area that, uh, we're mandated by state statutes to do DOT inspections. Um, we have all the records for the last ten years, because I have the, uh, the trucks checked on a safety basis from an outsourced vendor, so there's no political entities behind it, but they have noted over the last couple of years, you need to replace this truck. Um, it's going to come, it's going, going to come to a day where, guess what, the truck's offline. Um, and then what are we going to do? I'm going to come to you and say, I need a service truck to put all the equipment in, or we have to buy a replacement. So we're trying to be proactive, we're trying to move forth. Um, you know, I just need a final direction, um, to move forth. And, um, we, uh, we await your, uh, your response.
Okay, um, Kurt?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Well, and Nuccio, um, so make it kind of quick. Um, it's obvious that we do need this fire truck, and we, um, my comments aren't saying in any way trying to slow this process down. I, you know, I want one way or another, but, um, to this, this for this to be funded, um, but I would prefer it be funded via, um, uh, bond, by bonding. Um, frankly, um, I think it's, we, uh, give up something of an opportunity cost for using our undersigned or, or our reserve fund to pay for the truck. Um, it doesn't matter how it's paid for, but I, I would prefer that we have that money available. Um, we heard it earlier that we have unprecedentedly low interest rates right now. Um, and I, I think of any time, this is the time now to be bonding, um, for this item. Uh, we won't be sending assigned any money for appreciation, and I understand why, I mean, that makes sense. It would be expense, very expensive, but we, uh, uh, we would be in the same boat in twenty years when we're having to figure out another way to purchase it, so it doesn't matter if it's paid for out of pocket now or via bonding. So I think, I would like to have that liquidity, uh, for us, for schools, um, going forward, uh, during this unprecedented time, so I prefer bonding. But, uh, either way, I'd like to see this go to public hearing at next meeting and get a decision made, uh, sooner rather than later. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, I would just echo Councilor Schenner's comments about, you know, getting this decision expedited sooner rather than later. Obviously, it's been four or five months since we talked about it. The one question that I don't know if it's more appropriate for Lisa or Mike to, to answer, um, just kind of looking back at the historical, um, minutes, it seemed like there was discussion about allocating from the fund balance to the capital non-recurring account versus, um, just straight utilizing the general fund, unassigned fund balance. And I'm curious if there's any real difference between, between the two, or if it's just sort of saving a step in the process, if we were doing one versus the other. It seemed like it was, uh, former town manager Werbner's desire to, to go towards that as a potential avenue to allocate from the fund balance to the capital non-recurring, if, if the balances were in, in alignment, that it would be feasible.
I don't know, Lisa, if you want to maybe touch on, uh, this, but I can say that we use both, uh, the general fund and capital non-recurring fund during the capital budget process. Uh, we, you know, the CNRE fund, uh, is used for some certain projects. Um, we, we've used it before, for example, to help pad, uh, the Vernon sewer plant, I believe, was paid for partially out of that money. It's not a, it's not a fund that, um, repletes, replenishes itself. It, once it depletes, you, you need to consciously put money back into that fund to, um, to, to replenish it. But, um, I don't know if there's any benefit to funding the fire truck either in full or partially out of the CNRE versus out of the general fund directly. I don't know if Lisa's shaking her head there, but there's, there's no benefit or dis- disadvantage to doing it one way or the other. It's just one pot of money or the other. Uh, Lisa, maybe you can tack on to that.
Yeah, oh, sorry, hold on, I lost my video, sorry. Um, I would not recommend going to the CNRE, uh, just because that fund has planned use, uh, throughout the CIP plan. So I, I would not be using funds from that area. If, um, if anything, it, it would be the, um, the general fund fund balance if you were looking to do a cash purchase. That, you know, certainly, that's a, a policy decision if you want to bond or you want to use the general fund. And we, we, once John starts moving with, uh, the direction he's, he's trying to get to, um, we're going to have to make a decision which way I'm going to pay for it. Right now, he can still keep moving along, doing what he has to do, get the bid specs out, but once I have to start putting some cash up front, I can only front so much cash until either we determine it's, um, general fund, fund balance, or issuing bonds.
No, thank you. I think that, that covers the question. It just seemed like it was an extra step just to transfer funds from the fund balance to the CNRE versus just straight from the fund balance. But, um, but that being said, I guess I do still have, I'm, I do want to see this go to a public hearing, but I do have concerns still about, as kind of Kurt highlighted, not sticking with bonding when there's low funds and just, I, I think I'm concerned it sets a bad precedent that we're something that should be a bonded, you know, long-term infrastructure, piece of equipment that we're using sort of what's used as an unassigned fund balance, and sometimes more, you know, colloquially referred to as a, as an emergency fund. You know, we kind of pushed this project out so many times that we've made it into an emergency versus appropriately taking care of it when it was needed several years ago. So that's just my concern at this point, but I do want to see it go to a public hearing and have the discussion with the public about what avenue is most appropriate.
So, um, uh, my opinion on this, um, I've obviously been in favor of using, um, cash to buy this since well over a year ago, when we had the first conversation with Steve, and we talked about it. Um, with Birch Grove coming online, the money that we're paying there, our debt plan has increased higher than what we had planned, and it's going to take about five years for it to get back down to the regular number. Um, adding more debt to that doesn't seem wise to me right now. It's going to put in more of an undue burden on the taxpayers, where we should be looking to minimize the tax impact in coming years, especially for something like this. There may be unprecedented low, uh, interest rates, but there's also unprecedented low interest that we're earning. The money that we're earning on the fund balance is very low right now, too. We're paying more interest than we are earning. So we are paying to borrow this money. The intent of our debt plan has always been to move us towards being able to buy things in cash, and that's what I'm looking at here. Um, we have the availability right now to look at this money from the money that we've saved over the last two years, because technically, what we were talking about with Steve Werbner back when this came about was the money that was going to be saved and moved to the fund from that year. Since then, we've had a whole another full year of money to look at, and of course, there was a lot of money that went back this year because of COVID. So I don't think that's like optimal maximization of, of that, but using this amount of money, after we adjust the debt table, what we just did, it's still going to keep us around a twelve percent um, amount of unallocated funds. So, um, I'm all in favor of lowering our debt. I think our debt is one of the highest debts around of all of the towns around us, with the exception of Vernon, and they are significantly bigger than us. So we're adding a lot more debt on with the school, and I'm thinking, um, this is a truck that might last fifteen to twenty years with a twenty-year debt payment. And I'm just thinking my grandkids don't need to pay for this, if we can pay for it now. Um, that's my opinion. So, um, where I'm heading on this is setting the public meeting and moving forward with, um, moving forward with taking it out of the fund, um, in relation to, um, what was mentioned earlier. Uh, I don't believe that we have changed our stance on bonding at all. I think the conversation was we had to give John a secured source of, uh, funding, so he could order the truck. That's what we did, but every conversation that we had with Steve circled around to, we're going to give this, this bond approval out there, and we are going to review what money is left at the end of the year to put towards the purchase of the fire truck. And then craziness happened, and this is what it is, so I don't think our stance has changed on the bonding at all. Um, and I think this is a good usage of our, of the, the monies that have gone back into the fund over the last couple of years, rather than debt. That's my take on it. Brenda?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to echo what Kurt and Steve were saying. Um, intentionally or unintentionally, it seems that we've delayed, um, our chief from going forward with specs and being able to purchase this, um, very needed truck for the safety of our community. Um, I don't believe we should be going forward with, um, taking a look at purchasing it with cash instead of bonding. Um, I don't think we should go forward with the public hearing. We should just keep with what we, the previous town council had decided, along with what the public had decided, so that we can move forward, get this truck purchased, um, and help out with the safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou?
Thank you, manager. I'm just looking for a clarification, because I've been listening to everything going on, and with the, with the approved bonding, is that something that we could have gone for with a purchase order on? Or is it something that we needed to make a final decision on? And, uh, I mean, I guess that's my, my one question is, you know, is with this bond approved, can the specs be put in? Can the order be placed?
I was under the impression that it could, that with the, that's why we did the bond at the time, was because when we said, we had to find a, we had to guarantee we had a funding source. So we said yes to the bond with the implicit understanding that we were going to review the end-of-year numbers to possibly rescind the bond and pay for it in cash. My understanding was that we had the approval to go forward with the truck. Now, I know a lot of the world has gone crazy since then, and maybe it didn't happen like that, but I was always under the impression that we had that approval. Mike?
I, I agree. I, I think we actually, I was going to try to pull it quickly, but explicitly, in a previous council meeting, I forget, I was probably back in February, this had been clarified that if we, as long as we had a funding source, in this case, bonding, we could move forward.
Yep, that was my understanding, too.
So then, just as a follow-up, so basically, that there's no reason why this couldn't have been ordered earlier, that we could go forward with the order I am now, and now it's just a matter of determining which funding source we're going to use it by. Either continue with the bond or pay for it out of cash. But we can't, so it's not a matter of, we're delaying this by having a hearing. It could be ordered. It's just a matter of then we decide how we want to pay for it. Is that, is that accurate?
I think that's what Lisa said. It just comes down to when the invoice comes in, where we're getting the money from.
I agree. I think, yeah, Lisa, I hope you agree with that.
Yeah, she's shaking her head, yes. So.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else? So do we, I guess then we just put it up for a vote to?
Madam Chair, can I, can I speak? It's John Littell.
Sure.
So do you, obviously if this was my fault for waiting with the COVID in the last couple of months, I apologize.
I'm not saying, don't, don't take it that way, John.
In, in, in all fairness, but do you see my frustration since 2013, when the prior manager said, let's wait, let's put it a part of a bond resolution that was going to go out? And I'd never seen anything that goes out. And then that would obviously be a town meeting, which maybe I don't understand the whole bonding and the town approval process. But obviously prices are jumping, especially with the COVID right now. And I can't get a firm price from a manufacturer or come back to, you know, obviously ask for a bid waiver or a manufacturer. Obviously, I reached out to, one of my other titles is a Tolland County Coordinator. So I reached out to 26 other departments that looked at buying two to three trucks at the same time to save other towns the same money. And that's, that's what I've been trying to push throughout Tolland County. But like I said, I know Ellington just placed another order for a truck. I know two other towns are coming up to place another order. You know, I, I just got an email just about a week ago that says that we have a demo unit right now. Do you want it? So like I said, if I need to push my committee to move faster, I'm sure that Deputy Chief Dojum would agree with me. He's online, very close to the screen right now, that within the next couple of weeks, I can push this very quickly where I could say, hey, we finalized a set of specs, we have what we want, and we can come back and maybe possibly get any agenda to say, hey, tie this back in, if that's some direction that you're going to give me.
Mike, I think that's, comes down to you, right? You guys working that out?
Yeah, we, Chief, I was going to say we should probably discuss offline. If you, if you can expedite this, you know, purchase process. As noted, you do have a funding source at the moment, but let's see what the public hearing yields in the next, if, if there is one set tonight.
And that's, that's my only concern, Mr. Rosen, is obviously, you know, similar to what was said in the beginning of the meetings tonight. Obviously, we're in, we're in deficit times right now. People are still fighting to get a payroll check or funding sources, which FEMA, thank God, stepped up the plate to add some more money to some people that have lost their jobs. My concern is I, I have no idea what's going to happen in the next three to four weeks. I mean, there's schools right now that are pulling the plug on opening the schools right now. DM Barry just said that they weren't opening. New Haven's having problems. What's going to happen in the next two to three weeks? And all of a sudden, my agenda comes up for a public hearing. Obviously, anybody in their right mind would say, no, let's hold on. I mean, so that's my concern of, you know, sitting down with another manufacturer, making a commitment and then backing out of something. And, you know, I just want you guys to keep in mind that, you know, something of this nature of a, a manufacturer, it might not need to be the full expense in a full year. There could be two payments. Obviously, a lot of manufacturers look for a, a prepayment and then obviously a second payment on completion. So could you split this over a period of time? You might be able to. But obviously, I leave that in your hands and the finance manager, which they know that, you know, you guys know that better than I do. But like I said, I just hate to pull the staff in. You know that I had 13 towns here over a month ago with all the membership of the department, looking at 13 towns, Mansfield, Ellington, Manchester and all the other towns, when, when we looked at every single truck that was been recently delivered over the last four years. So we have a pretty good idea, but I, I apologize for delaying the, the issue.
It's okay. I think we're good. So anybody else have anything, or do we want to go to the resolution and vote?
Steve Jones, I wasn't sure if Lou had his hand up or he just put it down. He decided not to speak. I just wanted to make sure if he was recognized.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Jones. No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I, I would entertain the motion that the resolution be introduced and set down for public hearing on September 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via Zoom remote meeting.
I'll walk back in it.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Sorry, coughing. Oh.
Cassandra? Steve?
Hi.
John? I'm sorry, John, can you say that again?
Hi.
Thank you. Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
And I am an aye, so that goes, that passes six to one. We'll set the public hearing for next meeting on September 8th, 2020. And Lisa, I'm assuming you'll have that updated document for us to, to review with that. You probably already have it all updated, ready to go.
That's pretty much here. I just have to get it to you. Just want to talk to the manager about that assigned for the, for the future budget number.
The step down.
It's the only thing I need to change.
Perfect. And I just want to make sure we're still on the same page. John has the okay to go ahead and, and move forward. Either way, he has a funding source.
I would say yes to that. Yep.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Let me back up to the top of the agenda. That's nine, two. All right. That gets us to 10. Report to the town manager.
Okay. Good evening. Mike Rosen, Town Manager. I just have a couple of things I wanted to brief the council on. So as mentioned earlier tonight, we, we did have earlier today, the bond rating call with Standard and Porous, the rating agency. All signs are that we had a favorable review, but obviously the official report will come out probably within a week or so. We're expecting Lisa and I to hear something, at least preliminarily, by the end of this week. So, you know, we explained our, our situation, our, we covered our economic development and crumbling foundations, and we covered the COVID-19 pandemic. And we also explained, you know, our strong management team that we have and financial position. So like I said, it sounds like we are in good shape with that. And Barry, who was on the call earlier, seemed to agree. I wanted to update the steep grant, the Small Town Economic Assistance Program grant. The deadline for that is this Friday at noon. We are very, almost ready to, to sign off on it, to send it. Just a couple of finishing touches. Just as a reminder, you had, council had authorized the manager to apply for the grant. This year, it's in the amount of $128,000 and change, about 128,205, I believe, is the final number. And what we're doing is we're putting that money towards, if we receive the grant, towards the recreation center to do some needed improvements there. And also to free up potentially, like we talked about, storage needs for the fire department. That was another avenue we were looking at to help John out as well for COVID-19 PPE storage. So either way, whether it's fire or just recreation storage, that's part of the, that's part of the application as well. But we're, we do believe it's going to be needed for COVID-19 storage. So that's on the way this week. We'll get that out. I wanted to update on how we're doing with the Planning Director interim search. That posting has been live now for just about a week. We've had an application come through that, that Mr. Wilkinson and I are going to interview the candidate for the interim position. The interim is open and it's a rolling position. It doesn't have a, a position close date or an ending date. So as candidates come through, we will be interviewing them. Generally, for interim positions, you're either working with retired planners that may want to do a short, short-term gig, or in some cases consulting firms that do interim planning. But obviously, the posting is live. And if anybody's watching this that is interested in being an interim town planner, take a look at our posting on the town website. One other thing I wanted to bring up, too, so I had received an invitation to the council. I want to extend that we would need to do a special meeting, but what it is would be a site walk of the TVA parcel with the developer, Stephen Williams. He called me today to extend the invitation to the council that if we do want to do a site walk with him, we'd have to post it as a, as a meeting. So it's something I just wanted to put out there for consideration. He wants to show us sort of the area and the work he's been doing for the past few months. That's really what I wanted to update on tonight. I see Steve has a question for me.
Steve and I like to hike. I think we're on for that one, right, Steve?
But most definitely, as long as the date is amenable to me. Did he provide one at this point?
No, I, it's completely open. He wanted me to just workshop the idea tonight.
Okay.
I'm good with that. Anybody have any questions for Mike from his report? Okay. With the Standard and Porous call today that you had, did you guys go over the unallocated fund balance and expectations for the step down and usage and stuff like that? Is that part of the review?
Yeah, I have to give credit where credit's due. Lisa did an awesome job of giving information packet that was probably, what, 100 times the size what they normally get of, something along the lines of they get like two pages here and there. And we, you know, we really overloaded them with information. So they had full access to all of our financials. They've seen our fund balance. They are, they, they're impressed by it. They, they think that we're, we're in good shape for a relatively small town. I believe the term I heard was we punch above our weight class, meaning that we are in the same, you don't often find Tolland County towns that have AAA bond ratings. More, more along the lines of the Fairfield County towns that do. So it just, it's, that was a nice way of putting it, that they, they said that we're in, we're sort of in a good league as a AAA community.
It's always good to hear. Got to keep that bond rating so those interest rates stay low. And, okay, so then that gets us to 11, adoption of minutes.
Chairman Nuccio, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as laid out in 11.1 and 11.2.
This is Brenda Felucy. I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John? Lou?
Abstain.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that passes six, yay, and one abstain, Lisa. Correspondents to council?
Hello. Sorry, have to flip pages. We only received a few emails and where did I write them down? Um, I'm so sorry. The coughing threw me off.
Hit something? Hey, did you get? Button coil fly at you?
Yeah, I have a tickle in my throat for some reason. Button coil, get put to bed at eight o'clock, so I'm good.
I'm a maddler's.
Yes. Go to bed at eight, get up at eight. We received one email about signs on the green and they were not in favor of having signs for recognitions. We received further correspondence about Crandall Pond. And we received one email that ended up bringing a pretty long string about the bonding questions for the fire truck. And that's all I had for correspondence that wasn't ads or invitations to go to different Zoom meetings.
I think we got one from somebody about a misunderstanding about the flag that was being flown at the fire station, which I think was cleared up.
Oh, I didn't, oh. Was that, I, I thought that.
There was one, I think, that went to the whole town council.
Yeah, I think it was between the two meetings. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that one somehow. Sorry about that. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
That's okay. Problem. So that gets us to 13, the chair report. I don't have a lot tonight, other than to say that the dates for debris pickup is extended through August 27th at 287 Baxter Street. So if you have debris left from the storm, please bring it down to the debris pile. And I will be having chair hours on the third, which I believe is next Thursday, at 6:30. Chair hours have been going really well. We've had people showing up to pretty much every one of them. And even when we had the storm, we had people show up. So that's really encouraging to me. I, I, I like people coming and talking. So that's all that I had right now for chair report. And that gets us to commission, communications and petitions from council persons. So before I go around the table, I wanted to say, I sent out an email to everybody today about a request that came in from two counselors about a debrief forever source. So we're working to get that meeting on the agenda. The email that I sent out earlier to all the counselors, it's asking what topics you would like to discuss. So Mike can make sure that he has the right people at the meeting. So we need to make sure we have time from the topics to get people that can come in and talk to everybody to get it on the calendar. So if you can please send me your topics of concerns, I sent a list that I had kind of pulled together from the conversation that we had in the last meeting. Or just review the list if you're fine with it. I would appreciate it. Once we have that comprehensive list, we'll get it on the calendar and we'll work to, we'll work with the invitees, the schedules to make sure we can get people on. And then just for the public, if you have any areas you'd like us to discuss, please send an email and those topics will be added to my list. That's all I have. Are there any other petitions from council persons? Steve?
Okay, I am unmuted. Okay, so the first, I think, I wasn't sure if Mike had mentioned it in his manager's report, but I know that we're having that event next Monday for the municipal pedestrian pathway projects. And I think that it's sort of around the last couple of days of Heidi's, 10 years planning development director. So I'm hoping that they might be in attendance because that seemed like a project they really cared about being completed. And then I believe we won't be having a meeting prior to it, but I think there's the virtual Celebrate Talon. Or maybe that's the week of our meeting. Yeah, it's the sixth or the 12th. So if I'm not in attendance that week due to a vacation, I just wanted to, to raise that, that people are aware that Celebrate Talon is going to go virtual. And they're looking to utilize a promotional code for discounts at participating businesses. So it's unfortunate we can't have Celebrate Talon in person, but hopefully there'll still be a lot of support for farmers markets and other businesses in town and crafts, you know, craft persons and makers that sell their wares at those businesses.
Thank you for reminding me. I did not put that on here. And you are right, virtual Talon, Celebrate Talon. That's a big one.
So, but it looks like, and there's also, sorry, just to, to add, that there is the contest for decorating, I believe, your house.
House, yeah.
So there's a card for first place and $50 for second. And you put your picture and email it to Talon Rec. And yeah, so I think it's best fall display and best talent spirit are the two categories to enter in for the, the prizes.
Perfect. Thank you for reminding everybody. Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few, a few things or two things for me. Once I was not here at the last meeting, I did want to express my thanks to the entire town staff, to everyone at Town Hall, to everyone at Public Safety, Chief Littell and his crews, Public Works, that the past few months have been extremely trying for the entire town and that the town workers and that the, that the town overall has, has really borne the brunt of it that, that Chief Littell with his crews, even for the last power outage, providing water, providing MREs, providing assistance to our, to our neighbors that needed it, to Scott and all of his crews clearing up the roads. And moreover, for just maintaining the safety of the town during the cleanings at Town Hall, at all the different buildings, ensure that, that they're COVID safe. And, and for the Town, Town Hall employees, all the workers there, carrying on their day-to-day business. That it's been a really rough past few months, and I just want to express my appreciation. It shows how when talent works together, that we can accomplish pretty much anything. So I'd like to express my, my thanks to Mike and all of his, all of his crew. Secondly, one thing that I would like the town council to consider, and that I'll be actually proposing as it gets closer, is a, a town proclamation coming from the council. Is a uh, a town proclamation coming from the council uh, on uh, regarding Veterans Day. That uh, I think that this is a perfect opportunity for us to work with the Veterans uh, Recognition Commission. And uh, sort of recognize through proclamation, uh, all the past and present veterans that have lived here in town. As well as uh, that we could get recognition up to date, since I know that there are the uh, Wall of Recognition, the Wall of Fame. In Town Hall has sort of uh, fallen behind because of inaccurate or, and uh. Incomplete information that uh, I believe that if we work with uh, the clerk's office, with all the uh, new. Uh, veterans that are coming into town and uh, work with the Veterans Recognition Commission, that we could bring it up to date and get everything uh, uh, everything current. So that going forward that, and every veterans aid to go forward and recognize as new veterans that move into town. Um, that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Uh, I like the idea. Um, do you have anything um, formal that you want to kind of like throw together? And then we can um, try to get it on an agenda?
Uh, yes, Madam, uh, Madam Chair, I will, I'll put that together and I'll uh, I'll uh, I'll make a proposal for one of the next meetings. Thank you.
No problem. I appreciate that. All right, nothing else from anybody? Ooh, we got a couple of minutes, Steve.
Oh, we just have um, item fifteen, if there's any additional uh, public listed participation.
Yes, I know. We're close. All right, so public participation, any, anything on jurisdiction of the council, three-minute limit. Um, if you're on the phone, you can raise your hand. Um, make sure you state your name and address. If you are, I'm sorry, if you're on a device, you can raise your hand. If you're on a phone, it's star nine. Um. Karen?
Yes, um, Karen Moran, Fifty Merle Way. I just wanted to um. Clarify um, that the COVID funds coming to the Board of Ed for a hundred and forty-nine thousand um. Are not. Quite distributed yet. So yes, we have forty-six thousand. That is. Uh, seems to be on its way to us, which we don't even have that yet, but um. I would just be careful in giving that perception that we have an additional a hundred and forty-nine thousand in our hands. Because that is not true, because we all know that things can change with the state. So let's be careful about that perception that we give when we talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody?
All right, uh, Chairman Nuccio, no other public comment. I entertain a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-three P M.
This is Brenda Felucia. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
I.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
And I am an I. That's unanimous. Everybody, thank you and have a good night.
Take care. Have a good night, everyone.